Okay, we are good to go.
We're good to go. I call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Republic.
To the Republic.
Done.
God.
One nation.
Was liberty. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Telling you, somebody can figure out a way to make that work on Zoom.
I think there should be one person and everybody else lip syncs.
I move that that be Dennis.
That's next time.
All right, Ms. Low, will you call her off?
Chairman Seema.
Here.
Alderman Frauci.
Here.
Mr. Bolzina.
I am here.
Mr. Kuchin.
Here.
Mr. McKnight.
Here.
And Ms. Munsell. She is here. Uh, Dr. O'Mel.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. White.
Yeah.
I have Mayor Dalton and Ms. Miller as absent. We have a quorum.
Great. Can I have a motion on our approval of our minutes for our September 16th meeting?
Move.
First.
Dr. O'Mel, uh, with a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or changes on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion appears to carry unanimously. We do have a number of items on the agenda tonight that, um, are old business zoning text amendments, but we also have some applicants who are in the, uh, the room with us. So in the interest of shortening the amount of time they have to spend on Zoom with us this evening, I would recommend we suspend the agenda rules and move to consider the agenda in the following order. So we would do items, item five first, then six, then three and four, and then we'll come back to one and two, our old business. Can I have a motion?
Move.
Dr. O'Mel, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McKnight. Thank you, Mr. McKnight. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Any opposed? Motion appears to carry unanimously. All right, so we'll start with agenda item number five first this evening. If I can find it. Okay. Item number five, request has been made by Todd Staley owner for approval of a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a children's playhouse located at 1669 Mason Knoll Road in the suburban estate zoning district. I'll call for our presenter. I think I saw Mr. Staley online. There he is.
Good evening.
Do you have your name and address for the record?
Name is Todd Staley, address 1669 Mason Knoll Road, town and country Missouri.
Do you have a, a presentation or anything like you'd like to start off with tonight, Mr. Staley?
Uh, I believe you guys all should have the submittal package that was provided that contains a brief narrative, architectural drawings, uh, letters of support, some current photos of the project, trustee approval. Uh, I would, if you guys don't mind, just like to, just a brief introduction of the project and maybe some Q and A, if I could answer any questions you guys might have on the submission package.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Go ahead, if you're ready. Mr. Staley?
Yeah, so, so the project that, um, so we're constructing currently and seeking approval of the continued construction of a, of our children's treehouse located in the northwest quadrant of our backyard. Prior to constructing the treehouse, we had consulted with, um, multiple surrounding neighbors. Uh, we got unanimous support from the trustees in our neighborhood. We consulted with a very reputable licensed professional architect in St. Louis. And, um, you know, our, our, the reason for really working with the architect was to make sure that the treehouse was constructed, you know, it was a safe and inviting structure for not only our children, but the 13 other children that adjacently surround our property that, uh, like to convene and play in our backyard. But also to make sure that the material selection and the size of the structure was consistent with the other treehouses that are currently in our neighborhood and also the color palette and material selection to be consistent with the recent upgrades that we've gone through on our property. Within the last two years, we've, uh, painted the entire facade. We've added a deck addition on the back of the house. We've put on a new screen and porch, replaced all the windows and doors in the house. But all of that is only relevant to make sure that the color palette, material selection of the treehouse was consistent with that. We failed to request for a conditional use permit when we started the project. And for that, that's, I apologize for that. That's, that's my complete oversight on that. But we have, um, an overwhelming support and a lot of excited neighbors for us to complete the project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. Any questions from the commission? Alderman Frauci?
Am I unmuted? I think I'm in.
You are.
Um, so I have a quick question for Ryan. Ryan, your memo to us, um, states that it's a hundred square foot project, but the plan seemed to indicate 199 square feet. So I was trying to figure out which one is.
I believe I'm referring to the, the playhouse itself and not the, not the decking.
But would we, for our purposes, we would count both in the project? Is that true?
It's a, it's a matter of interpretation. I mean, the, the accessory structures, children's playhouse. You know, I was looking at the playhouse itself and I wasn't considering the platform. But if you want to consider the platform, yes, it'd be 199.
Well, I'm just trying to understand if the platform would require something different, i.e. a deck permit as opposed to based on the fact that we don't have it included in this application.
Deck permit. I mean, if it requires.
Put in a deck. So if we didn't include that 99 square feet, would we not need then a separate permit for a deck?
Well, that's, I mean, that'll be up to the code official as to what, what permits are necessary moving forward. Right now, there's a stop work order on the, the project. Um, your consideration is just a children's playhouse. It, you know, it's a hundred foot, square foot place structure on a overall 199 square foot platform, 23 and a half feet total in the air to the roof.
Okay.
I mean, really, that's what other considerations just, the place.
Bailey, you mentioned that you had support from the neighbors and I'm wondering if you had spoken to the neighbor behind your property, which has obviously the greatest view. Um, they're right downhill. And so your structure does look into their upstairs windows. Did you check with them prior to putting in and completing anything?
Yeah. So we did have a conversation. Our family spoke with them about two months ago. They raised a concern with the water runoff of the roof on the structure. There, the conversation with them was the reason for the inclusion of the gutter and downspout on the roof. So yes.
So, okay, because the, the letter that we received from them also discusses the size and height in relation to their property and the visual coherence from their property, looking behind them. Um, I noticed when I came to look, there's another play structure inside your fenced in yard and then this one on the outside of it, um, but much closer to their property, which sits at a lower grade. So did you have any conversation?
They, they never both voiced any concern with that relative to us. I did, I was made aware, um, that there was a complaint filed from somebody as it relates to the viewing of the, of the structure. So, uh, my family invested in a professional landscape company to come out four weeks ago and we planted, they planted 14 green giant evergreens, which were, um, as explained to us, the, the largest, most cascading privacy trees that you could plant. So we, not knowing where the complaint came from, we planted them along the back and the side street of the home to help shelter what was somewhat of an interesting complaint that we had heard, but we wanted to make sure that we addressed it. And so we got those planted. So they're, they're currently eight foot trees. They grow about three foot a year. They mature at 60 feet, that cascade out 20 feet in diameter. They'll be rather large trees to provide that privacy.
But that will take quite a substantial number of years. Based, based on that, this is the photo that, that I don't know if you can see that. Are those the trees that you're referring to?
Uh, it's hard to tell from that photo. They have some in their backyard and we have also planted some as well.
Would these be the ones that you planted, looking up at your play structure? They look newly planted.
Again, they, they could be, yeah.
Mr. Kuchin?
I, I'm going to come back to, to Alderman Frauci's first question of staff. It's not, now I'm a little bit confused. I, I understand the difference in the 100 and 199. I'm now a little confused as to whether we are being asked to approve a structure which is 100 square foot or are we being asked to, to consider and approve the entire structure?
It's the whole structure. I mean.
That makes more sense to me, given the, the drawings, et cetera, that we have. I just want to make sure we're all on the same board in terms of that's what we're considering. Okay.
I, yeah, I apologize. I mean, wait, the, the code says for accessory structures, children's playhouse max 50 square feet. Anything above that needs a CUP. The playhouse itself is 100 square feet. That's the number I used. I, I could have put more information in terms of the platform.
So our questions. Our questions address the entire thing.
Yes.
That, that's good. Okay.
Mr. Spencer, I did have a question as well. The maximum height is eight feet in per code, but that would pretty much mean that anytime somebody builds an elevated treehouse, we're going to see it because eight feet would not be.
There've been three in the last four years, yes. And they, every, um, structure, play structure that's come before you has been because it's mostly because it's elevated.
Yeah, it's in a tree. It's going to be over the eight feet at the top anyway. All right, thanks. Mr. Bolzina?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think we have to consider the whole structure. I mean, it's a children's playhouse. The playhouse is the deck, the building, the everything. So I think these, uh, I think these things are getting a little bit out of hand. I mean, these are buildings and they're being placed in people's backyards. And now this one may be the highest one we've seen, other than one that we asked to be lowered and taken down. So it seems like, uh, these are substantial structures. And when a neighbor makes a complaint, I think we have to be considerate of that.
Mr. Kuchin?
Um, could, I'm going to ask Mr. Staley or staff. I've got the location map, um, exhibit A in front of me. And, and we, we have several letters in support and one letter not in support. I, I'd love to mark off on my exhibit A, who's who? Because I, I don't know which neighbor is supporting and which neighbor is, which neighbor is not supporting. Could, could we do that?
Yeah, could I, could I address that?
Absolutely.
So the, the three letters of support, which since we've submitted the application, we've got an overwhelming amount of additional support letters, which I'd be happy to forward on. But the ones that you guys currently have are the ones that are in our technical neighborhood. So anybody that could physically see the treehouse from our neighborhood, which are my property, uh, immediately to the left, my next door neighbor, immediately diagonal in the cul-de-sac that can, that has a direct line of sight onto the treehouse. Across the property immediately to the right, across the cul-de-sac. Yes, sir. And the property immediately to the right, which has a direct line of sight into my backyard. Okay. Those are the letters of support that you have. The one not in, the one has raised some concerns with the stormwater in the, the view is directly behind my house.
Not directly behind to the left, but directly behind.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
If I could just briefly touch on the, the view that you're seeing in the picture that you refer up. I mean, that is a, that is the current state of construction. The finished product obviously is going to look significantly different than that. You're looking at a lot of exposed wood, which gets clad with the ledger boards, no differently than the new deck that is adjacent, just not included in that photo. Uh, the black railing is the same railing that we've used on our deck that was just recently constructed. So it will look very similar to the deck. And the, the color selection for the actual treehouse portion is the same color that we just painted the exterior of our home. So it, it will be a different aesthetic than what you're looking at in the picture.
Uh, Mr. Bolzina, and then Alderman Frauci.
Yeah, I, I think when originally in our zoning, uh, classifications and, and requirements were set up that people were building playhouses. Play, playhouses were something akin to what we see next to a, a swimming pool, you know, like a changing room house. So small structures that have a limited function and they're attached to the ground. And it's only lately that we've seen playhouses be elevated and become treehouses. I don't think treehouses were something that was anticipated under our normal zoning classification. And certainly as a conditional use permit, I think they need to be looked at very carefully.
Alderman Frauci?
So what I'm, I'm looking at the pictures that you sent with your plan. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So the photo in the middle, second row, second from the left, shows the view from your, it looks like your yard, through your play structure and then to the home that sits below yours. Do I have that right?
Yes, ma'am.
This picture? So I went to that home and I stood in their driveway. And one of the things that I have become very aware of in this position is that when somebody sits lower than you are, um, they really receive an incredible amount of sound from places. And, and your playhouse is beautiful. The, I mean, it's a beautiful, um, concept. The challenge is it is very close to that home and it does look into those upstairs windows. And I'm getting complaints from another location right now where a pavilion is in a very similar position, where the pavilion is higher than the properties below. And every single weekend I get calls asking, you know, do we call the police for noise violations? And the answer is, I mean, that's all that they can do. Um, you, you mentioned those neighbors in support and I, I mean, I drove around the cul-de-sac and I looked and I'm very familiar with your neighborhood. The challenge is that those folks all either sit at grade or, um, or a little bit above where your residence is. Whereas the home behind you that is challenged with the visual coherence sits considerably, considerably below. Um, and I'm, I'm sure that you would agree, there's a big retaining wall and what have you down there. So I mean, they're, they're quite a bit below you. So their view, when you look down at them, you see one view, but when they're looking up, the view is very different. Um, so I don't know if you've taken the time to go down and look up, but it is a very different view.
Um, Ms. Mueller?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I.
I, oh.
Looking, look, referencing the photo that, um, in, in, in the picture that you just held up there, I would, I, I don't believe the trees that you initially pointed out were the ones that I recently planted. Those appear to be the ones that were existing as that photo also is old. I think that, um, the addition of the trees that I planted, you know, over the next few years should provide some significant privacy, um, to the neighbors immediately behind us. That the selection and location of the treehouse is as close to our permanent home as we possibly can surrounding a mature tree. The reference to height at 23 foot six, just for the group's reference, is the very maximum peak of the roof to, uh, a depressed sloped, uh, landscape elevation. The average height of the structure is 10 feet off finished floor or off grade. And I, I, you know, we, we selected a lower height, honestly, of the treehouse out of concern that many children are going to be playing on there. Not that any kids will be wanting to willingly jump off, but you know, there are, we are trying to be mindful of some potential safety that could arise. So we did actually lower the overall height by two feet from the initial height. It's, I, I do completely appreciate and understand that from a vantage point that is significantly lower, that the aesthetic view is entirely different. I have tried to think of creative ways to the trees to help satisfy that view. I could cover the underside of the deck so that they don't stare at the exposed beams as, as they've raised. Um, or wrap the columns in metal to help them blend in further. The, the other concern that I have or that have been made aware of is the water runoff from the gutters and downspouts that we had added. I spoke today with, uh, a civil engineer that recommended that the, um, the only other thing that I could do to help contain that, uh, the, the minimal runoff that would be experienced is to hard pipe it to the storm sewer drain that's located at the rear corner of the shared properties down there. I'd be happy to, to discharge all the water, hard pipe down to that area to remove all of it. I am trying to take into consideration, um, their perspective. Yes.
Ms. Mueller?
I just want to address, I'm a little confused. Alderman Frauci, you raised, I think, two issues in your comment a moment ago before Mr. Staley spoke, which is I think you let off with sound being a concern and issue. And then I know there was the height differential. I, I thought that the height and view differential was more of an offshoot of what your initial lead-in was, which is the sound. I, I guess I have two things on, um, and then I also want to address something that you just raised again, Mr. Staley. I'd respectfully find that sound argument to be unpersuasive. There's nothing stopping the Staley children or any children for that matter, playing in that yard and making sound at ground level, exactly where or even closer to the property line that playhouse is right now. And I don't see, I mean, that seems to be a little bit much if we're going to complain about people making sound in their yard, um, being a problem, just because there also happens to be a play implement there. Number two, Mr. Staley, to address your concern or that you said that there have been concerns about water runoff. Obviously, I don't have a formal study here in front of me, but it seems like if anything, you would have already improved any runoff that would have been occurring to that, um, neighboring property, given that you've already added, I think, guttering and other improvements to the play structure and you've added in trees, um, to the area is what we do to try to control runoff vegetation. Um, I have no doubt that it's going to be a very attractive and well-built structure. I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Kuchin?
So just a, a question for Mr. Staley with respect to the height. I can appreciate that it's a, a slope and so the, the grade is greater from the side of the play, the playhouse that's closest to the neighboring property. And of course, it's shortest on the side closest to the house. Why this? Why this height? And, and I'm particularly focused less on the height of the playhouse itself, but the roughly six foot of stairs, the roughly six foot of elevation, um, on the side nearest to your house. Why, why that height? It, it, another way of saying, my, my initial reaction is the overall structure could be lower by several feet if the stairs were not five foot 11, but something lesser than that. And any thoughts?
Yeah, uh, honestly, I mean, we just, just in reviewing the other treehouses in the neighborhood and speaking with the architect, the initial proposed height was an average of 12 foot off of grade. So when you have a sloped grade, we had to take the median, uh, location, which is approximately in the middle of the treehouse. We lowered it down to 10 foot and where grade changes, elevation height changes as well. Um, the stairs just happened to sit on the low side, uh, on the low side of the platform.
Yeah. But that, that possibly.
I mean, it is a treehouse. So I mean, the, the concept of it sitting up in the tree was, uh, can, you know, part of the, the decision as well.
Ms. Mueller?
One other question, Mr. Staley. You said you had other letters of support. How many other letters do you have and can those be sent into the commission if necessary?
I'd be happy, yeah, I'd be happy to. Four or five others. Yeah.
And what homes are those from? Can you tell us?
Um, I can. They're not all included on this.
Oh, okay.
On this photo that you guys have referenced, but I can make sure the addresses are included in the letters when I forward them on.
Sure.
Honestly, look, our neighborhood's full of a lot of kids. There's a lot of excitement around this project. A lot of people are anticipating the completion of it. I mean, it's, this is a great neighborhood. We sit on a great cul-de-sac with lots of young children. This was a project for multiple families to enjoy. Was not really expecting, um, any concerns, although I do now hearing them and trying to address them to the best of my ability.
But it sounds like you got like, it sounds like you've got like, what, seven, eight, nine letters in support? Total?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can request many more from the people that have came over.
Ms. Lowell, have there been any other public comments received?
Um, no, I just want to note that we've received one public comment, um, that was distributed to the board this morning.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Um, yeah, several observations. I toured the neighborhood and there, I was quite surprised how many large structures, playhouse structures there were in the neighborhood. This particular structure is substantially bigger than even those. However, it's a beautiful structure according to the drawings. There's no question about that. It's a big structure and I wonder if Mr. Staley can tell us if any structural calculations were done on this height. It's, um, you've got about 10 feet of, uh, columns on the, on the low side and columns are very susceptible to wobbling and, and coming down. Other observations are that, yes, um, the upper side in fact is 18 feet above grade level, not 10. And, um, certainly like Mr. Kuchin said, I wondered why we can't lower it down to grade level at the top end and substantially reduce the, the overall height. This is a very bulky thing. I had some concerns about runoff, but I concern, but really we're only talking about the runoff for about the 100 square feet of roof. The rest, we're going to get rain anyway, so that's not a, not so much an issue. Uh, and, um, do the neighborhood indentures have any size limitations? Does anybody know?
Um. That, to my knowledge, they don't. And again, we, we visited with, with all the trustees to the neighborhood and prior trustees of the neighborhood prior to beginning the construction of the projects to try to understand how the previous treehouses were built and to address your, your question about.
What about then?
And then again, Mr. White, you broke up.
What about engineering? Has, have, have been any calculations on, on loading, side loading from winds?
Hello, this is Dennis. I'd like to suggest. I mean, the architect has prepared the plans. The architect's going to seal the plans. The building official is going to approve the plans. So.
Yeah, I see that.
I have a motion. Mr. Cution.
I'll make a motion, but, but give me a second. I'll make a motion to approve as is with conditions A through F.
I'll second that, as well.
Seconded by Mr. McKnight. Further discussion on the motion. Mr. Bolazina.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add a condition.
All right.
And that would be to plant fourteen eight-foot-high dense evergreen trees along the south property line.
Chairman.
Mr. McKnight.
Dennis, is that inclusive of the ones that are already there? And I, I will second that just to have the conversation about it, but.
Well, nobody seemed to have a picture of them. So we don't have anything in the record that says they're there. I mean, I believe the statement, but I just don't have anything in the record that where they are and how they're, he said they were along two the edges. I think our concern is really the south edge.
So just to clarify, Dennis, you're saying, so just to clarify, you're saying additional trees to what's shown in the pictures? Or are you saying additional to what's there today? I'm trying to understand the motion.
Motion is to plant eight, fourteen eight-foot-high dense evergreen trees. But the homeowner said they were along two edges and our person that's complaining, I believe, is on the south edge. So if we're going to plant trees, I want to make sure, if this is going to go through, I want to make sure that that neighbor has a dense planting of evergreen trees.
So we have a motion. Are you seconding that?
I second, yeah, I seconded it, yes.
And then Mr. Cution.
Yeah, so, so let me, if, if I can address Mr. Bolazina, just to make sure I understand the proposal. So let's assume, Dennis, right now, seven eight-foot giants have been planted on the south side. And let's assume the other seven are as, as we describe on a, on a different, on the, the perpendicular side. Your, your proposal would, would end, would have the end result of Mr. Staley planting seven additional eight-foot giants on the south side. Am I reading your proposal correctly?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Mr. Staley, would that be acceptable?
Oh, we had.
Mr. Staley, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, so we, we hired a professional landscaper to come out and the current trees as planted are as far across the south elevation as those trees would grow. As you can see in the photos, and if you guys are familiar with the neighborhood, there's several mature trees. There's too much shade to, to plant anymore. We planted the maximum amount of trees that we could along that south elevation and then also the, the elevation adjacent to that.
Well, it's, it's a little confusing. If we go back to the photographs and that Alderman Franchi referred to the center photograph. And if we look down the hill, there's some little trees that don't look like eight-foot-high dense trees, but there are maybe three or four of those. And they don't.
Point out.
Mr. White, Mr. Bolazina has a floor.
Yeah. And they do not look like they're going to provide at least a screen in the near future for this particular neighbor's concern. Not that I want to bend to just one neighbor's whims, but I think the size of the structure does require some accommodation to all the neighbors and especially to a neighbor who doesn't seem to like this intrusion. So, I mean, short of that, and I see those little trees, but I would want to make sure that that neighbor has, basically what they're going to be looking at is trees and not a treehouse all year round. Short of that, I would be recommending that the treehouse be lowered and reduced in size. But for now, the motion is to plant the trees.
Ms. Mueller.
I think we've got to clarify here because the way that the, the requested amendment is worded. Mr. Bolazina, you asked for, did you say fourteen trees on the south elevation?
Uh, I came up with that number because the homeowner mentioned it. Let me look, let's look at the distance.
It doesn't matter. I just need to know what the number is that you proposed because the way that amendment is worded.
Fourteen was the number.
Okay, thank you. What is, does not take into account is what has already been planted there. So as suggested, it would require this homeowner to plant an additional fourteen trees to what is currently on the property. Mr. Staley, how many trees do you currently have on the south elevation of the property, new ones that you planted?
Uh, we have eight.
Okay, so it, I, I haven't gotten yet to the part about whether or not it's even feasible or practical from a horticultural standpoint, but as it stands now, that instead of asking the homeowner or requiring the homeowner to plant an additional six trees to make fourteen, it would require him to have a total of, what, twenty-two trees? Is my math right? Parked on that or, or planted on that south elevation. I don't, I mean, I don't, I can't think of a time where we required a private homeowner to essentially plant a forest along one elevation of their property to satisfy one adjoining property owner. I think that's totally unrealistic. That doesn't even call into question whether or not as the professionals who the homeowners already planted, Mr. or hired, Mr. Staley hired to do the professional planting of those eight trees on the south elevation, already gave his professional opinion as to whether or not planting any more or differently than what they did now would even be feasible or sustainable or would even grow so that we don't have the adjoining homeowner coming back and complaining about dead trees that don't get enough sun or water growing property on that south elevation. So I think we're asking something totally unrealistic of a homeowner that's already gone beyond to try to address a complaint of one adjoining homeowner who is one out of what, eight, nine, or ten? And we got eight or nine or seven, between seven to nine. I know we don't have all them in front of the commission formally, but letters and figure of the development. So I, I think that we're asking for a little bit too much here. How tall are the current trees that you had planted, Mr. Staley?
Well, they're eight foot eight.
They are eight feet. Okay, so I mean, what they look like in a picture, if they're eight feet, they're eight feet. And I, I don't, I mean, I, it's, I think that we're, I, I, I don't know, this seems to be just more than what is necessary under the circumstances and under the review of other projects we've looked at like this, so.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Uh, yes, I, I tend to agree with you there. I will further point out, though, that the ground keeps falling away from the structure towards that particular property. Eight-foot-high trees would not even come halfway up, the columns never mind reach the deck. So how many years are we going to have before these trees reach a mature height to cover the, cover the, the house itself? Seems to be a long time. The, the bulk of this house is massive and the height of the house is, of the tree, of the top of the house is massive also. I think that's what we should be looking at and not trying to titillize and, and, and try and cover up this thing. It's not going to be covered up in, in a reasonable number of years.
We have a proposed amendment to add an additional, it sounds like six trees. Further discussion on the amendment.
That, that's not the way that I understand it, Chairman. Mr. Bolazina specifically stated fourteen.
I, I thought that I must have misunderstood because I thought after Mr. Cution's discussion, we agreed it was going to be, we thought at the time, seven, but, Mr. Cution.
I don't know. I'm still not parliamentary procedure here, but I would like to offer an amendment to Mr. Bolazina's amendment. A parenthetical add, if you will, to clarify this fourteen versus whatever.
Please.
So my, 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 my proposal would be to take Mr. Bolazina's proposal and then add to that parenthetically, if, if appropriate, the, the following, recently planted green giants should be included in the fourteen, in the count of fourteen.
All right, so a point of order, maybe Mr. Mr. Slus can help us here. So do, do I, do I need to, do we need to second the amendment to the amendment? All right, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't love stacking motions, but yeah, we need a second to the motion to amend the amendment.
Let's not go anymore.
Since that was my first assumption, Mr. Chairman, I will second that amendment as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McKnight. All right, we have a, an amended amendment. Alderman Frauci.
I just have a quick question about your amendment to the amendment. How many more amendments? So you mentioned including all of the trees that were planted, but all of the trees that were planted were not on the south side. So then only the south side trees would be included in your fourteen?
That was my intent.
That's what I, I just wanted to make sure your intent and my understanding were the same.
Yeah, whether, whether my wording appropriately captures that, I don't know, but that was the intent.
I just want to make sure I get it.
All right, Mr. White.
I think I'd respectfully point out that we're not qualified to state the number of trees on that, on that south side or any side. As Ms. Mueller said, we don't know how many trees that side will actually accommodate and still stay alive.
Mr.
I don't know what. I, I feel very uneasy about stipulating and telling the owner that he has to plant one tree more or two trees more or ten trees more. Strictly talking about the number of trees on that south side, I don't think we're qualified to say.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Staley, so, so you stated earlier that you'd already planted eight trees. So this fourteen, if it were to go forward, would add an additional six trees, if I understand correctly. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's what I understand, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Bolazina.
Just to make some of the members a little bit more comfortable, there's two hundred and ten some odd feet on that south property line and fourteen trees would be one every fifteen foot. I'm not saying that the trees have to be installed like a colonnade, they can be staggered. And we tell people all the time in conditional uses what to do. So I have no misgivings about adding these additional trees and worried about that they will survive if a landscaper puts them in in a manner that they will survive and stagger them if necessary around other trees. So it's not, it's not an unusual request. And I think, given how far this project has gone along without a permit, I think the homeowner is trying to be very accommodating and we are trying to be accommodating also.
Monsell.
Um, Chairman Seema. I guess I'm, are, reading the, 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 about the neighbor's letter that disagrees with the project as it's submitted, there, there's no indication that planting of trees will allay their concerns because it's an elevation. I guess I'm just concerned about we're trying to fix something and that's, it may not necessarily fix the, the root issue. I, I don't know where to, I'm not offering any. I don't, I, that's my area of concern, I'll say.
Well, if I can add, then the only alternative would be to lower the treehouse and lo- lower the structure, if you want to go there.
Okay, Ms. Mueller.
I, I mean, it's, the other alternative is we let it go through as it is right now and we don't worry about these issues for the benefit of one sole complaining homeowner. But what, I mean, I'm just saying, let's not eliminate that as an all, another option, too.
All right, we have an amendment to the amendment. Let's see if we can work our way back up the tree here. So the, the, I need to, I'm looking for a voice vote on Mr. Cution's amendment to change the number to a, actually, could we restate his?
Mr. Chairman and, and Mr. Cution, so I need to clarify, I have the offered amendment to the amendment as being to add, quote, "recently planted green giants on the south side are to be included in the count of fourteen."
Thank you. All in favor of Mr. Cution's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the amendment to the amendment carries. Now we have at, at the amendment, Mr. Mr. Slus, would you just take a whack at the amendment for us since we've been asked?
So the, the offered amendment would be to add a condition G, which would read, "plant fourteen eight-foot-high evergreen trees along the south property line. Recently planted green giants on the south side are to be included in the count of fourteen."
Further discussion on the amendment. Ms. Lowell, we call a roll.
Mr. Cution.
Yes.
Ms. Menzel.
Yes.
Dr. Romel.
Aye.
Alderman Frauci.
Aye.
Chairman Seema.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Sorry, what are we voting on?
It would be Mr. Bolazina's amendment or added condition G.
The trees.
Going to call it the Bolazina-Cution amendment.
Bolazina trees.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. McKnight.
Yes.
Ms. Mueller.
Okay, well, some confusion about the result, potential result of this. Maybe this is a question for counsel. If it's an impossibility based on whatever professional recommendations, you know, come out there, if they have somebody come out for the planting of these trees, are we potentially passing an amendment that's an impossibility of performance situation? And what is the outcome or result of that if we do that? And then what's coming upon the homeowner at that point?
You know, I, I think as a practical matter, if, if a condition we imposed was impossible or impractical, the applicant could come back. Plus, if the applicant's able to get the landscape route before this goes to the Board of Ordinance, if, if they come out and say, oh, no, you can't plant these extra trees, they would be able to bring that up at the board level.
Okay.
That's, that's a good thing about having the two-step process, that there is another group that will review this before it goes through.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. I didn't want it to completely screw up all timelines. Okay, so I'll say yes.
And Mr. Bolazina.
Hmm, yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we've amended it. I am number five with condition G. Item number five with condition G. Any further discussion on item number five? Alderman Frauci?
I'd like to add a condition H or make a motion for a condition H. And that is that the storm water will be piped to the storm drain rather than allowed to take an overland flow route, which I believe the applicant mentioned that they would be happy to do. That would alleviate the stormwater runoff concerns provided by the neighboring property owner. And I believe the applicant has already agreed to this.
Do I have a second?
I just like memorialize that.
A second.
Mr. Staley?
Could I comment briefly on that? I can hard pipe it to as close to the storm drain as possible. The storm drain is not located on my property, so I can get it to approximately 10 feet from the storm drain. But I'm not piping it into my neighbor's yard, so I can, I can daylight it as close to it as possible.
Mr. Chairman, a question there?
Mr. McKnight?
Mr. Staley, would that, would the flow from that exit of the flow go into the drain? Or would it be altered away? I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the flow, where the drain would be. So you drain it on your property and it would flow into the storm drain?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
Ryan, don't we have an ordinance that talks about not?
It would have to be 10 feet from the property line.
From the property line.
Yeah.
It could daylight as close as 10 feet, no closer.
Well, I think as long as the flow would take it to the storm drain, that wouldn't be an objection to me either, so. Alderman Frauci, would you want to adjust that to state that or how would you want to do that?
Well, I mean, as long as he's daylighting the pipe 10 feet from the property line and it's directionally flowing straight to the storm drain rather than the neighboring property or the neighbor to the south, I'm trying to see on here where, I'm looking at your actual plans to see where the storm drain is in relation, but I don't think that they included that. Is, is the storm drain on the property of the homeowners to the south of you or another property?
The storm drain is located not directly to the south, but their next door neighbor in the corner of their properties where it's located.
In the back corner? I'm just trying to find it on this map.
Is the drain anywhere near what we see of a retaining wall that's in that far corner?
No, the storm drain is located in, it's just immediately behind a whole bunch of honeysuckle. It's kind of, it is the neighbor that has raised the issues, it's immediately neighboring their property in the back corner. I mean, it's very close to my property. I can, I mean, I can assure you that the water will go into the storm drain.
But it will cross their property first? Before it does that?
It sounds like it's going to do that or what?
Yeah, I mean, all of the water from the higher elevations go into that storm drain. This just, you know, more specifically puts it on that drain.
Mr. Bolazina?
Yeah, I, you know, we're talking about a very small roof. And I think, I'm tending to think that sheet drainage 50 feet away is going to be better than direct discharge 10 feet away from a neighbor.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment H?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKnight?
So this is, this is a 10-foot roof, right? This is a 10-foot roof. It's really not 10-foot by 10-foot roof. So there's really not a lot of drainage that's going to come off of this thing.
Right.
But, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were talking about the size I was thinking about was what it is, so.
It's also under a tree.
Yeah. Okay.
Ms. Low, we call a roll?
Ms. Munzel? Mr. Bolazina?
No.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Alderman Frauci?
Aye.
Chairman Seema?
No.
Mr. Kuchin?
No.
Dr. O'Mel?
Nay.
Mr. McKnight?
No.
And Mr. White?
No.
The motion fails eight to one.
Further discussion on item number five? Mr. White?
Notwithstanding the increase in trees, I still think we need to address the bulk of this structure. The trees aren't going to give any protection or any visual protection to the neighbors. For many years yet, eight-foot trees that I pointed out earlier don't even come up halfway up the columns on the south side. Remember that this property keeps sloping away from the treehouse. It doesn't go flat. It keeps sloping away. So the trees have got to get to about 15 or 16-foot high before they even come to any appreciable height on the structure. I have a question for Mr. Staley. Would you consider lowering the deck of the treehouse? And if so, how much?
I mean, at this point, that would require some significant redesign and that would be, that would be a significant effort. The portion of the treehouse that's not constructed, the roof and actual playhouse portion is the only non-constructed portion, so the, I would have to have an architect relook at that and understand what the options would be.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKnight?
I guess, I mean, one of the questions that I think one of the concerns that I have with this, because this is, this is a large structure. I think one of the things that I'm, and it's not going to be something that's a temporary structure either. It's not going to be something that lasts for five years and gets torn down like many playhouses, playhouses or 10 years or however long. This is going to be one of those ones that we're going to be dealing with in the future. And I guess I'm trying to figure out, and this is a question to staff, what is the, what, what limits somebody from trying to make this a habitable space at some point down the line?
We don't allow secondary dwelling units, is the short answer to that.
So if some, I mean, so I wouldn't need to add a condition here to say this could not be converted into a bedroom at some point, or we could not put furniture in the place that makes it a bedroom. I mean, I guess I'm trying to look at it in that.
We, we, we have that condition when we have pool houses, just because pool houses are so easy to use as secondary dwelling units. This, I mean, this isn't anywhere close to that because there's no plumbing or, or I don't believe any electrical involved. So you could certainly put that condition in just in case, but it, it's not legal under our code, a secondary dwelling unit.
Alderman Frauci?
Ryan, this is just a question because I, I really, I'm looking into it, couldn't find an answer. But if this, this structure was on the ground, it would or would not count against green space. If it was a pavilion, if it was a gazebo, if it was.
It would count towards, if it was on the ground, it would count towards green space, yes.
So because it's elevated, it does not count towards the green space of the property?
Correct. And it would still need a CUP even if it was on the ground because of the size and height.
Right.
Dr. O'Mel?
I think we all should remember that this is setting a precedent. Some of you may recall one of the last ones that we had to take was a two-story one and we had them take down one story. So the next one may be 30 feet high. I mean, at some point we have to start thinking about how we'll control it if it's that popular and I don't, I don't know if it is. But a precedent will be set here, which we may have to live with. That's all.
Chairman Seema, I feel like my concern is rooted in that it's a direct neighbor that has an issue with the elevation and the size. And I understand Amanda's point that it's only one, but it's one that's right up against it. And the previous one that we had allowed, all the neighbors were fine with. So there's a difference in my mind with that. And I agree with Dr. O'Mel that the precedent set is something to consider because it's obviously something that's going to be, come up a lot. It's a popular trend.
Mr. Kuchin?
Quick question of staff. I believe this type of precedence issue is, issue or question has come up before. And there's, there's not legally any precedents that we're setting one way or the other in this, correct? I mean, each situation is different.
Every, every conditional use stands on its own merits.
Correct. So I'd just be careful that, in my mind, regardless of my vote, I'm not setting a precedence one way or the other.
That's correct. The Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't bind itself through precedence that because you've granted this application, you have to grant one that's substantially similar or almost identical. That's correct.
Mr. Bolazina?
I have a condition I. And that no electrical power, lighting or plumbing shall be installed anywhere on the playhouse structure.
It's actually be condition H. Did H fail?
Yep.
Oh, okay. It's the H replacement then.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Alderman Frauci, any discussion? Ms. Miller?
Does that mean hardwired electrical, Mr. Bolazina?
That's correct. Are any, are any lighting of any kind?
So are we going to tell the kids they can't take a lantern up with them for a sleepover in the, in the treehouse?
Well, if you were a neighbor and someone puts a light up there showing in your bedroom, I don't think you'll like it, but.
If I, I, that's, I just need an answer to the question. Are we saying that kids can't even bring flashlights and lanterns up with them into that treehouse by the terms of your amendment?
Okay, we can change it to permanent lighting.
And then my other question was, Mr. Spencer, how many of, how many requests per year do we get for this kind of a structure, for a treehouse? If you know.
You're muted, Mr. Spencer.
In terms of what inquiries about rules and regulations or just a request to build?
Yeah, I mean, how many, how many things like this do we get a year for a treehouse like this?
I get two or three calls a year about playhouses, questions about playhouses. The three playhouses that you guys have reviewed have all been under construction when they were notified that they needed a conditional use permit for what that?
And, and can you remind me, I just don't, I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head how, what period of time it is we're talking about that we've reviewed three of these things? All of which are very different in character, too, by the way.
I want to say the last three years.
Yeah. So we're averaging one a year. And then for, the one before this was at one, I think next door to you, Ms. Munzel, correct? The one that was with the moat and the draw, the bridge and all that stuff and the water feature? Obviously very different in character. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
All right, we have a proposed, yes, Mr. McKnight?
I would actually just say, Mr. Bolazina's, what am I thinking, his?
Amendment.
Amendment, his condition actually addresses one of the concerns that I'd have, which is just that this becomes more of a living space than anything else. And if you remove the chance for permanent electrical and permanent plumbing, that does take away a lot of the risk of that. So I think that makes sense.
Further discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion appears to carry unanimously. All right, we have a, an amended agenda item number five with two new conditions. Further discussion on item number five? Ms. Low, we call a roll?
Mr. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Kuchin?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Bolazina?
Is this the amendment or the whole bill?
The bill.
The bill.
No.
Dr. O'Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Munzel?
No.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Frauci?
No.
And Chairman Seema?
Aye.
Am I missing somebody? Nope, the motion carries five to four.
Mr. Staley, I do think, before you go, before the, the board, it would be helpful to spend some time thinking about screening and probably some, some more detailed photos of the view from your, your neighbors. I think that would be helpful to you in that discussion.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Good luck.
Luck.
Thanks.
All right, next item on our agenda is item number six, a conditional use permit amendment. A request has been submitted by Catherine Collier, owner on behalf of Katie's Pizza and Pasta Osteria, for approval of an amendment to an approved conditional use permit for outside dining located at 14171 and 14173 Clayton Road in the Commercial Zoning District. Call for our presenter. Who is our presenter this evening, Mr. Spencer?
It looks like it's Mr. Rob Miller.
Okay, there you are. I see you. Mr. Miller, what can you tell us about your project?
My name, my name is Rob Miller. Can you hear me? My name is Rob Miller and I'm with Specialty Honning. And we're proposing to install three canopies slash awnings. Two of them covering existing pergola structures and then one, one structure would be basically a new substructure with, with a canvas covering as well. Basically due to, due to their occupancy limitations, outdoor dining is been very key for their, you know, continued operation and success. So they're going to be wanting to put, put some heaters outside and then with the, with the heaters, they require basically a waterproof roof overhead. And the, also obviously with, with the awnings, they'll gain water repellency as well for, you know, for, for bad weather, you know, rain and poor weather as well, so. Basically, what the, you know, add, add the structure, add the canvas. And I call canvas actually a vinyl fabric on the top of the structures for, yeah, the water repellency and so they can keep the spaces heated as. keep the spaces heated as, as much as they can while keeping them open, you know, open air basically for, for the COVID regulations.
Mr. Miller, any questions or discussion? Ms. Miller?
You know, and I apologize if I missed it in the paperwork and on the picture. And I was just looking at this stuff again while you were speaking to Mr. Miller, so please forgive me if I missed it, but that, that white piece of awning that's attached to what we received, that's the material you guys are proposing to use, correct?
Yeah, that's the fabric, correct.
Okay. And what's the color gonna be of that?
That is the color. It's white.
Okay. And that was what I wanted to ask about. Is it possible to have that in another color? Are there any other colors available of, for that, like a gray or a wood tone?
There are, yes. That, that was the, the, or the, you know, the, the owner chose that color, but I'm sure they would be open to different colors if that was required or, you know, suggested.
Yeah, okay.
I usually don't get too involved, too involved in the colors.
Sure.
Dr. O'Malley?
Will there be any signage?
No signage.
On it?
No signage.
All right. Thank you.
Purely, you know, purely for the functionality of, you know, the roof structure. So no, yeah, no signage or lettering or anything.
Mr. White?
Is there any thought to put temporary or even semi-tem, semi-permanent siding to these enclosures?
Um.
Either now or in the future.
Temporary, is it? Even as far as like walls on it?
Well, I've seen restaurants with vertical, they're usually open air anyway. But during winter season or the, you know, the fall and winter seasons, semi-permanent siding has been put on to make it more amicable to clients.
Yeah, they talked about maybe putting like a roll down type of, of screen, but they also can't, they can't. Yes. It's got a root.
And I'm asking this question. It seems logical that they might want to do that in the future. I'm wondering whether or not we should be considering that at this time as well.
Yeah, at this time, we're just doing, doing the canopy. So I would, you know, in the future, I, I, I don't know, you know, I think that could be an option down the road.
Mr. Bolzina?
This, this might even be, you know, these might not, you know, these could be a temporary thing, you know, just depending on what, what lies ahead.
Exactly, yeah.
So.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Bolazina?
Well, Granville asked the question that I was gonna ask, whether there was gonna be any side curtains or some kind of fuller enclosure to this concept, which I would have had more concern about if that was included in this submission because of the maintenance of those things and the appearance of those things. I have no problem with whatever color you want to pick because I don't think you're gonna see it. The only people that are gonna see it is somebody sitting at a table. But the white would offer a little bit of translucency, you know, during the times that you need a little extra light in there.
That's correct.
And I just, I'm looking at the picture and I know I've been here a hundred times, but I just want to make sure that I think behind where it says Katie's Pizza and Pasta, isn't the, the roof line there, isn't that white? So this would actually blend in a little bit with that white siding?
Yeah, the, the, well, the vinyl siding or whatever.
Yeah, whatever siding, whatever kind of siding that is. It is white though, right?
Yep, it's white, yeah, white trim, white siding, you know, and then the.
Okay, so this would just blend into that, to that white. And it looks like the door frame and what have you are all white as well. So it would blend in nicely.
Right.
Great.
Dr. O'Malley?
The, the whole purpose of this is to have as much ventilation as possible. Obviously, the reason for this whole thing is the pandemic. So enclosing it defeats the purpose. It has to be open. I personally wouldn't eat in any place that's enclosed. And neither should you. That's it.
Uh, Mr. White?
Yeah, yes, I, I agree on the other, the other point, of course, is safety because of the propane heaters, which probably will be a propane heater. So that is why my concern was that we approve this and then suddenly we have temporary enclosures there, which by default, we might have approved without knowing it. So I'm wondering or not whether we should stipulate that there shall be no temporary walls.
Mr. Kuchin?
Well, first I apologize for having to put you through watching me eat. And I'm happy to turn off my camera if that bothers anybody, Rob. So come back, Mr. Miller, question. Katie's Pizza has outdoor dining today. It, it seems to be very successful. And as others have pointed out, we're only here, you're only, this proposal is here because of COVID, understandably. And it's COVID combined with winter or adverse weather. Is there an intent? When spring comes or early summer comes, that these awnings come off or is the intent that these are permanent?
Permanent.
Is that right? Can, can they be made temporary in some form or fashion? Or visually would it, is it, is it irrelevant to the person driving by on Clayton or what have you?
I mean, as far as being, they are, you know, lightweight structures that can be removed easily. But, I mean, for all intents and purposes, they are permanent. I, whether someone driving by, I, I mean, I, you know, there's already a kind of some, you know, the large pergola wood structures. I don't know if this would really you know, set off any alarm bells.
Part of my point is I, I like the pergola structures. I wouldn't want this awning to detract from that. And if it's, if it's unseeable, I, I've, I've got it. If it's seeable, if you will, then that bothers me a little bit.
Okay. I mean, and I, just because Clayton Road does sit higher right there, I think you would see it.
Oh, okay. I got you. Yeah. You would see it.
Okay, thanks.
I think you're muted, Will.
I, I'm going along with Commissioner Kuchin on this as far as the permanence of this. I understand that we're, you know, COVID is driving things. I don't want to be really, I want to provide flexibility as needed to try and keep businesses in town and country successful in the COVID world. But I also don't necessarily want to expand indoor dining. The indoor dining right up to the curb in this space. And so that's, I guess, the concern I have with this is, and a question to staff that comes out of this, did we count the tables, the, the space? As that Katie's is now using or will be using in this space? Obviously, when COVID has gone, has gone past, there'll be tables jammed in here. Will this expand the need for more parking in that space? Will that be something that's gonna, we're gonna see an impact on in the future? We already counted that into the calculations before.
The, the outdoor dining that's there is what's going to remain. It's, it's all been, it was approved back in sixteen, fifteen, whenever, when this was approved.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't like somehow expanding in that space. Okay. Yeah, and I think the other thing is I'm, I'm not, I'm not a fan of the, of the fabric. I'm not impressed with it, but it's not my restaurant, so I can't really make that statement. So it's not my place to say that.
Dr. O'Malley?
Considering the news in the last forty-eight hours, remind the commission that we insisted that there be a brick wall between the parking and the dining. And I'm sure you've seen the news where the car went right into the urgent care center and killed the radiology technician. So I am again happy that we did that. And I also remind you that Mr. Bolazina did all of the outdoor dining description and, and ordinances and did a great job. And now it's come to fruition. It's, it's very popular. Unfortunately, it's gonna get cold. Just a reminder.
Mr. Bolazina?
Yeah, well, thank you for that, Dr. O'Malley. The, I, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused. Do we ordinarily have to approve an awning on a commercial building?
No.
Why is this something special?
Absolutely not. The only reason this is before you is because condition D of the original CUP said specifically, the addition of a roof structure for the outside dining area shall be limited to a pergola trellis system.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Perhaps interpretation is by adding this awning, you're, you're not adhering to that condition.
Okay. Okay, but typically if
Typically.
the barber shop wanted to put an awning out front that's in Clayton, you know, in that where Country Club is, if they wanted to put an awning out, they wouldn't have to come to us, would they?
Correct.
Right. All right. All right. Very good. Thanks.
Further discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Chairman Seema?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that staff has received no comments in regards to this agenda item.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
With conditions A through G.
Mr. Kuchin?
I'll come back, Mr. Miller, to, to my other, my earlier line of questioning. Is, is there an easy way to make this a, a seasonal or a temporary awning? Is, I mean, architecturally, practically, from a management perspective, is that doable? And, and do you think the applicant would be okay with that?
Not, not sure I follow what, what you're asking. Is, you mean as far as being easily removable?
Yes, it's such that, and where I'm, where I'm going is would it be practical and, and okay with the applicant if we add a condition that gets to the notion that this is a seasonal awning? That, that it would be removed for the summer months in some form or fashion?
Um, I, I mean, I, I would have to have that discussion with them, but I think, I mean, doing something like that would be kind of cost prohibitive.
Mr. Kuchin, just a thought about that. I mean, th, these restaurants are under extreme pressure with, you know, being able twenty-five, fifty percent open. And even in warm weather, if you get a light drizzle, even though, even if it would be very comfortable outside to eat, they, they lose all of their outs, outdoor dining. And given that we don't have any idea how long this is, this is gonna go on, I, I, I wouldn't, I'd like to give them the option to have people eating outside so they can keep their businesses going.
Great.
I mean, one, one of the big things it comes into with, if they were removable is just the storage of them because they're usually such large structures that one of the big things.
Yeah, don't, you know, look, don't get me wrong. I'm the first guy in the world that wants businesses to, to thrive in and around, or I should say around town and country. So I'm, I'm just, I'm, that's, that's the reason I ask about the practicality of it as well. And I hear you, Chairman. I, I hear the point.
Further question or discussions? Ms. Miller?
I just have a super quick one. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the schematic correctly. So that, that pergola or that, that edge or that eyeing is gonna wrap over and cover those ends of the pergola as it is right now. Is that right?
On,
Like if I look,
you have, you've got awning A, B, and C.
Yeah, sorry. So it looks like A, well, yeah. I guess like the one very farthest to the left, it shows it as like a, I mean, it looks like it's got a lip, like for example, the middle one, the Katie's Pizza and Pasta sign, the very middle, I guess that's section B. Is that gonna, that lip of that awning gonna come over and cover the, the edge, the ends of those pergola crossboard? Does that make sense?
So, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
On awning, on awning A, it would not cover them.
Okay.
Awning C, it would not cover them.
Right.
Awning, but the middle one, awning B, it would cover them just because of a lack of height there. So to get anything to have enough pitch and everything.
Right, right, right. Yeah. Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. I mean, I echo, I, I like seeing that pergola. I think it's pretty. It was a nice addition. So it's sort of a bummer to have that cover it, but I agree that like Chairman Seema said, I think we need to do whatever we can within reason to make it possible for businesses to continue doing what they're doing under the circumstances that we're dealing with right now. So I, I did have a little bit of a concern about the white not necessarily blending with like the roof, you know, because as you come down Clayton by, is that Clayton? Yeah, I don't, as you come down off of like that woods mill, that exit, you can kind of look down and see and the top of it will be a pretty good broad expanse of white versus like roof color. But I, I don't know that it's something that I want to necessarily stand in the way of Katie's being able to do what it needs to do to be able to carry on. I'm willing to kind of listen to and defer to what the other members of the commission think about it. That was all I had to say.
Further questions or discussion on item number six? Ms. Lowell, you call the roll.
Mr. Bolazina?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Alderman Frauci?
Aye.
Mr. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Kuchin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Malley?
Aye.
Chairman Seema?
Aye.
Ms. Munzel?
Aye.
And Ms. Miller?
Oh, yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Next two items on the agenda this evening, items three and four pertain to the submittal for Dogtopia. If there's no objection, we will request the applicant to present all information pertaining three and four together, but we will vote on them separately as they appear in the agenda. Item number three is a zoning text amendment amendments to section four oh five dot zero eight zero definitions, section four oh five dot six three oh conditional uses commercial zoning district and section four oh five dot six five five off-street parking loading requirements, commercial zoning district. And item number four is a conditional use permit. A request has been made by Zachary Weichel of, I think I got that right, of Dogtopia applicant for approval of a conditional use permit for a pet daycare located at one three nine three three one three nine three nine Manchester Road in the commercial zoning district. Call for our presenter, Mr. Weichel. Please give your name and address for the record.
First name is Zach, last name is Weichel, address is four two zero East Madison Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri. I'm the owner-operator of Dogtopia of St. Peters. I've been with Dogtopia for a little over three years. It's a franchise, and I'm gonna share my screen here in a second, but it's a franchise of about a hundred and forty-five and growing stores. It's a premium doggy daycare service in North America with a, a growth number looking to be four hundred by twenty twenty-three. So we're super excited about that. I have the rights to two franchise locations and been taking my time on finding a perfect spot. I'm really excited about this. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen so you guys won't have to look at my beautiful face anymore and get to PowerPoint. And happy to answer any questions along the way or at the end, whatever works best for everybody. Is everyone able to see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Lovely, thank you. So our, what, what we offer at Dogtopia is open play daycare. It's our, it's our Uh, it's our, it's our constant, we are, you know, seven days a week, um, it comprises about seventy-five to eighty percent of our revenue stream. Um, and it's what Dogtopia is all about, so it's a home away from home for dogs, we also also order, offer boarding and spa, so it's a one-stop shop, which is super nice. Um, a little bit is introduction, business ops, target customers, uh location specs, uh an existing operation, and then business. Operation models. Um, just a little bit about Dogtopia as a franchise, so four hundred stores, like I said, by twenty twenty-three, a hundred and forty-five open currently to date. Um, franchise is based out of Phoenix and there's over forty-one uh support office team members available. Uh, so it's a a village of knowledge, that's probably the easiest way to explain it as far as helping each other out. Uh, we're redefining the redefining the dog day daycare business, uh like I said, with a hundred and forty plus in operation. Um, happy, healthy pups are at the core of what we're, what our business and what our brand's about. Um, daycare, boarding, spa, all rolled into one, and like I said, our our core focus and and continent is gonna be that daycare. Um, we're a premium service, we're the leader in the industry, and we're rewriting kind of the stigma behind sound and smell, and I'm gonna go into that further as well, too. Uh, it's a retail concept, um, which is super nice and convenient for communities and pet parents, especially in times where where. Where your time is very limited, so it's a a great way to stop on your way to work, on your way to dropping the kids off at school, grabbing a Starbucks. Um, convenient and easy pickup and drop off, and we can talk about that as more as well. Um, you know, we're we're the one-stop shop, like I said, so uh our pride is operational excellence, which is uh safety and convenience. Um, so I I uh, it's it's why I brought into the brand, um, I'm a big fan of everything that they offer, and it aligns with my own personal brand as well, too. Uh, it's backed by World Class Class Franchise, which we spoke about, and it's a highly dedicated and trained staff, so uh I, under my belt, have. Prior to even opening up my first store, um, spent a lot of time in other existing stores doing training on all the different roles. Um, we have extensive online training for all of our, we call them canine coaches, but that's our room attendants, so we have three levels of online certification for training. Um, that they have to go through before uh operating in one of our playrooms by themselves. Um, they spend two weeks in-room training with an existing uh canine coach or room attendant. Um, to, you know, get to know the dogs, build a relationship, understand their cleaning protocol, um, understanding the way we operate and. Standards for safety, success, and interacting with pups. Um, as far as like our standards for safety and sanitization goes, uh we have extensive cleaning procedures. Uh, pre-COVID, during COVID, uh, we not only have cleaning procedures uh in our playrooms and our entire facility, but we also have. COVID cleaning lists, along with our existing cleaning lists, uh just to maintain that standard of cleanliness, safety. Uh, which is at the core of our of our business, um, sound management, so this relates to that stigma of sound, so we use uh soundbat insulations. Uh, for different parts of our our facility, so it being a retail concept, we want to make sure we have a happy landlord, happy tenant neighbors. Um, so we have different soundbat um walls that are uh with tenants, uh walls between playroom space, walls between lobby and. And human space and dog space, uh we have separate HVAC units um between dog and people space. I spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on existing A A track at the St. Peters location. Um, it it's great because it helps with that stigma of smell, uh but it's also a safety thing as well, too, so we're bringing in uh a lot of air. Um, to help not only with the smell, uh but also to help with any airborne illnesses, so uh seasonality, just like kids getting colds in daycare. There's things like kennel cough, um, so bringing in new fresh air, uh since kennel cough is an airborne illness, helps helps minimize that. We also have UV lights in all of our HVAC units, so any air that comes into our facility travels through this UV light, which kill then ninety-nine point nine percent of airborne pathogens. Um, in all of our dog space, we have compressed rubberized flooring, so it's it's a safety thing again, um, it's better on pups' joints and paws, it's easier to clean. And we're dedicated consist to consistency, so we deep clean our facility twice a day, we're spot cleaning constantly. Um, and we hold ourselves accountable a lot of different ways, but a big way is through our our live webcams that we have in our playrooms. Uh, we we have a a super user-friendly uh Dogtopia app and on our website where our pet parents. Uh, bring their dogs in for daycare and they can actually watch them live on our webcams. Um, so we're extremely transparent with our pet parents, they know exactly what's going on in our playrooms, they're watching their dogs socialize, exercise. Uh, making friends, uh whether it's their first day or, you know, they've been with us since the beginning. Um, it's it's a super cool feature, I'm really proud of it, and it it's a, it's just really transparent, which I love about the business. Um, as far as protocol goes, so I included solid waste uh and mop cleanup. Uh, for solid waste managements, uh these are the steps taken to um make sure we're following procedure properly. So we pick up solid waste immediately using a plastic bag, we secure tie the plastic bag that the solid waste was picked up in. Place in a tightly litted bin lined with a plastic trash liner, empty that trash bin at the end of each shift or more frequently as needed with a double bag waist tied. Uh, security, and then it's then placed in the facility dumpster, so that's protocol for waste management. Um, this is just an an overview of our two mop bucket system that we use in each of our playrooms. Uh, we have a a Dogtopia as a business they work with called Health Technologies, which is a certified. Um, pet cleaning industry, so they we use four different types of cleaners in our playrooms, uh we have an open play, so it's it's um. There's no issues with, it's called Eliminator, but it's it's a lower grade cleaner, that that's that's available for open play, so we use that throughout the day. Uh, we have something we use twice a day called um. Um, triple two, excuse me, so triple two is used, uh it's a more of a heavy-duty cleaner, it's it's great for. Um, deep cleaning the rooms, which we do during naptime during the middle of the day and at the end of the day as well, too. Uh, but we use a two-mop bucket system, one water, one is a diluted eliminator cleaner. Um, so we fill one mop bucket with plain water and use that red mop wringer insert, we fill a different mop bucket with the approved cleaner, which is eliminator in this case. Uh, we dip that uh mop in the approved cleaner and wring out thoroughly, soak up any liquid waste with the mop, ensuring not to spread around the floor, so there's a specific mopping. Uh, procedure uh used in place for that, we rinse out the contaminated mop in the water bucket with red liner. Um, ready the mop for the next use by returning it in the mop bucket with the approved eliminator cleaner. So those are the steps that we use throughout the day, we constantly are cleaning, um, we're constantly refilling these mop buckets as needed. Uh, we have the staff on onsite to be able to make that successful as well, too. Uh, this is a soundbat protocol management for uh all Dogtopias. Um, so it goes through four different options, we have a type A, type B. Uh, type D is gonna be between demising walls, and that's floor to deck. Um, with soundbat insulated ceiling tiles as well throughout the entire space, so that's any shared wall with a neighboring tenant. Um, different soundbat insulation between dog space and people space as well, too. Um, and there's an outdoor area as well, too, which is super nice, um, it's very clean. Um, we we have a live webcam out in our outdoor area as well, too, and it's artificial turf, so it's it's extremely easy to clean, it gets deep cleaned twice a day. Just like our playrooms do as well, um, it has this, it has specific specs. Uh, to make sure that there's no off drainage or anything along those lines, as far as cleaning goes. Um, I know in the conditions, uh, we use the eight-foot vinyl fence out of the Dogtopia of St. Peters, this would be a different you, uh, different material, which is absolutely okay. Uh, but I include the specs on it as well, too, because it's a, it's a big part of our daycare. Um, and and our pet parents love it, and we love it as a Dogtopian as well, too. Uh, here's some pictures of the existing store out in St. Peters, so uh left-hand side of the slide is uh pictures I took about two weeks ago. Uh, getting this submitted, so this is our outdoor area with artificial turf, um, each playroom has direct access to the outdoor area. Uh, we don't combine rooms, which will, well, I'll show the schematic here in a second, uh, but we have rooms based on size and temperament, so we don't have a ten-pound dog with a hundred-pound dog. Uh, we have like-minded dogs with similar temperaments and similar sizes in in one of our three playrooms. So we don't combine rooms outside, just like we don't combine rooms inside. Uh, eight-foot privacy fence, which helps minimize the noise aspect of it, because you keep our dogs focused on what's going on in the playroom, or in this case, that outdoor play area. Uh, play equipment's super nice to play around, play on, but it's also a great way to uh structure the playroom and keep away from things like chase games. And again, with the the dedicated safety, um, top right picture, we have bollards that we installed uh for peace of mind, so nothing happens with. Um, anyone in shipping or receiving for an existing um store that's, you know, shared with us to have any issues of our fence being hit and. And dogs escaping or anything along those lines. Uh, these are our ten commitments to safety, so our certified canine coaches, we're safety experts. Um, every dog that comes into our facility goes through an extensive evaluation process, and that includes uh registration form, verifying vaccinations. Uh, we have a spay neuter policy for seven months and older for open play daycare. Um, it includes an evaluation where we make sure that the dog is a good fit for Dogtopia and that we're a good fit for the pet parent. All in all, we we make sure that the dog isn't, um, it, there's no aggressive behavior uh related to anything, so these pet parents are bringing these dogs. To Dogtopia, um, and we're there as a a place for socialization and exercise, but also uh we're there for safety as well, too. So we keep that in mind for every dog that comes into our facility. Um, we use homestyle crates, so we do a naptime, so just like kids, dogs get cranky, so every day. Uh, for two hours, we shut down our facility as far as open play daycare goes, and we do a couple things. Uh, we ship, we switch out our staff during that time, we deep clean our facility during that time. Um, and dogs take a a break, so it's a great chance to make sure we're cleaning up to the standards um that that we hold ourselves to. Um, talked about dog safe cleaning products through Health Technologies, which provides all of that stuff, the rubberized flooring, climate-controlled HVAC system. Um, the live webcams that we have, and then the Village of Knowledge or the community that Dogtopia has with, it's, you know, a hundred and forty-plus stores, and then it's. Um, franchisor as well, too. Uh, just a little bit about the community, so we're serving the town and country community. Um, you know, it's an underservice for a premium dog daycare service like Dogtopia, it's a high density of pups. Um, and Dogtopia is looking to provide this for the whole community. Um, primary customers are millennials and empty nesters, so uh millennials are waiting longer to have children, and a lot of them are using dogs. Um, to kind of test out compatibility, um, empty nesters, so um. My parents in general, they have two pups, uh, every one of their kids have left, you know, the household. Um, so they they love their dogs dearly and and will do anything for them, and that's whether that's daycare or vets, anything along those lines. Um, in this day and age, sixty-eight percent of households have at least one dog, and of that sixty-eight percent, twenty-six percent of those people have at least two dogs. Um, pre-COVID, we we did an eleven-step tour. Um, so our facility's set up to to uh be extremely beautiful on the inside, and we'll go through a three-D tour that I have of the St. Peter's store to. Give you guys a visual of what I'm talking about, um, but we we give a tour to every single pet parent, because we want them to be comfortable when they leave their dog with us. Um, we answer every question, we show them the entire facility, because we are, we are very transparent with how we operate. Um, while that pet parent is going through the tour, that dog taking that evaluation, uh to make sure that we're compatible fit for that dog and that pet parent's comfortable with us as well, too. Uh, we separate by three playrooms uh in an outdoor area, so each room has a dedicated canine coach, like I said, three levels of certified training. Uh, we're eight to ten hours of open play, um, and we're open seven days a week for our community as well, too. Um, hours of operation Monday through Friday is six thirty in the morning till seven PM, on weekends, Saturday and Sunday is eight to four. Um, that that is uh strict hours that we follow as far as pickup, drop-off, when your pup's allowed to be dropped off, pickup. Um, when our camera access is turned on, everything along those lines, so we're pretty, pretty uh accustomed to those hours, and and we stay pretty strong with them. Uh, the the facility's beautiful, it's fifty fifty-six hundred square feet, uh about fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred square feet for an outdoor player area. And that area has access, uh which is super easy from all three playrooms, uh we have a dedicated spa service, dedicated boarding for all of our. Um, daycare pups if needed, so their playroom homestyle crates and executive suites. Um, resort, we, going back to that safety aspect, uh we have fire suppression throughout the entire Dogtopia, and this space here is. Um, also available for that as well, too, so that's something I look for when looking at sites. Um, security alarm, high-end security system, motion detectors, security cameras. Um, all additional safety and peace of mind for pet parents, but also for myself, too, as a business owner who whose pet parents are trusting us with their fur babies. Um, this is uh the schematic for Manchester Meadows, so I I s- my team's been working super hard with this, so this was um. Might have a copy of it, I did, I did send it to Ryan, you might have it now in your email, but. Um, this is the layout that that is very similar to St. Peters, it's extremely efficient, playrooms are kept towards the back, um, all. You know, non-dog spaces up front. Um, we'll use this page as it, but as a south, you can see that the lobby is right at the front. Um, we're very fast on pickup and drop-off, uh the idea behind it is to be efficient and to make pet parents' lives easier. Uh, so once we get our dog in there, you know, we recognize cars, dogs, obviously really easy, we know what playrooms they go to. Uh, we have an awesomely trained staff who knows exactly what's going on, where every dog needs to be, the process and. Uh, switching out existing owner collars uh to our own collar system, um, and getting them in the room as well, too, so. Um, this is the the schematic that's uh the team's been working su- super hard on. Um, Dogtopia uses my St. Peter's schematic when uh doing similar things to what I'm doing right now, and they might not have a uh something drawn up yet. Um, it's used for um all planning and zoning and everything along those lines, so I I'm, I take a lot of pride in the schematic and and the layout. And the efficiency of playrooms. Um, and then this is the St. Peters location that's currently open, uh very similar setup, the difference is gonna be square footage. Uh, by about nine hundred roughly. And then I have a three-D tour as well, too, of uh St. Peters, so this is great for pet parents and also for exactly what we're trying to do right now. Um, this is a above look of the space itself, um, and we can sit and walk through quickly each one of these. So, um, build-out is gonna be very similar, lots of natural light for the lobby. Um, very clean, much different than what your traditional uh thoughts would be for, you know, a daycare, and that's the difference between what Dogtopia offers and what a lot of other places offer. Um, this is our only hallway in here, so this is where uh dogs go back and go to each of their rooms. Um, this is our eval room, so we use this for any new meet and greets, um, it's also a staging area before introducing dogs into playrooms. Uh, we put all of our dogs' collars and harnesses in these bins right here, we name each of them or put their pup's name on them. Um, and put them back in at the end of the day, wanna make sure they don't get damaged. Um, ours are snap-free collars, so if two dogs are playing together, and for some reason, one of them gets um hooked on the other collar, they come undone. So it's a safety thing again for us, just like everything, um, these are our um suites that we have, so we have two of them in each of our evaluation rooms. Uh, we're gonna walk inside the gym room real fast, so it's set up to as a playroom, which is super awesome, we'll go to the back and turn around. Uh, we have potty platforms in each of our playrooms. Um, homestyle crates, uh straight through that window is the lobby that we just started in, uh but it's very open. Uh, live webcams like we talked about in each of these, rubberized flooring, uh hose bib, potty platform. And straight through this door takes us out to the backyard. Um, the the camera that we used uh wasn't able to, with the sunlight, to get back there, so this is as good as it gets as far as view goes. Um, but this is one of our three playrooms, and we'll go over to. The romper room or the city, so uh this is one of our other playrooms, and and the benefit of using three different playrooms is. Um, is is like I said, it's that temperament and making sure we have like-minded dogs together, so better playmates when they're like-minded dogs together. Um, they have more fun, um, the the rooms are much more manageable, which is super amazing. Uh, it's better on our staff and and much better on the pups as well, too. Uh, toy box, which is the park, which is this room over here, it says small dogs, puppies, uh senior dogs. Um, every, all three rooms are set up very, very similarly, uh the difference is gonna be square footage per pup, uh based on size room. And then also uh your size of homestyle crates in the rooms as well, too. Uh, we have a spa facility, I guess before we go to that, so this is the other eval room, so this is just dedicated for our toy box dogs. Uh, it's got sweets inside of it, same bins and cubbies for our dogs as well, too, and then we walk right back out to that hallway we just came in. Um, and here's our spa. So nicer than my tub at home, um, we love this feature, it makes it that one spot, one-stop shop. Uh, we have a lot of pups who come in for daycare, who utilize us during naptime for spa services. Uh, but also, um, anytime a dog boards with us, four nights or longer, they do complimentary bath before they go home, which is super nice. So again, it's that stigma of sound and smell, um, we just make sure we cover all bases on it. Uh, break room in here, so this is for our staff, um, we also store a lot of our our daycare. So this is for our staff. We also store a lot of our our daycare stuff in here as well, too, bowls, things along those lines. Again, high, high end stuff on on everything, whether it's the flooring, the walls, sound bath, HVAC. It's a very inviting place, which is super nice. We we love everything about it, how efficient it is. And we take a lot of pride in it as well, too. Existing storefront right here. And that's it for this. I'll stop sharing screen. And I'm definitely open to any questions. I love talking about Dogtopia. I do it every single day, so I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has for me.
Dr. O'Mell.
Mr. Weigel. How many? How many dogs per employee?
It varies on employee. We have some canine coaches or room attendants that can, you know, handle twenty five dogs, thirty dogs. It also depends on the room as well, too. So if you have, if you have a gym room with twenty dogs, that's a good number for a gym room. Toy box, which it being a smaller dog, it could, it could be thirty, thirty five. It really depends on the the employee, the training they've been through and and their comfort zone. So it's it's a basis off employee. When we first opened a store, we do two people per every room for two weeks and we do it to make sure that everyone is comfortable. So when we first opened Dogtopia of St. Peters, even if it was five dogs, we still had two people in every room to make sure that they felt comfortable with each other. God forbid, anything were to happen. They had each other. They had our radio system so they could call for help. But but we do a lot of training to make sure that everyone's comfortable a lot. Very, everyone's extremely open to to feedback and to get and to also reaching out with any questions, comments, concerns so that we can make everyone successful as well, too. So it really depends on the person. As many crates as you see in a room is as many dogs as you can have in a room. So you're never going to see sixty dogs in a room that can only fit thirty dogs. It's probably the easiest way to explain that.
So the reason that I ask this is that today in the city there is a day pet daycare center which has a lot of complaints, including dogs which were injured, dogs which escaped, dogs which various things, they all come to light. And apparently in the city they, the certification is for fifteen dogs per employee and and the place that I was talking about had over twenty, which was a violation. So is, is there a certification for St. Louis County? What is the licensing for this type of business?
There is no requirement in St. Louis County. Dogtopia has high recommendation on what they consider to be the appropriate number of dog to human ratio. That, I mean, that I can tell you is we've never had any issues with dog numbers because we don't cram rooms. So I'm, I'm, I'm not in them. And we use our webcams as a great testament to that. So we're not sitting there with a room full of dogs and one person aimlessly walking around extremely concerned or confused. The idea behind this is transparency, safety, cleanliness, all of those things. And we hold ourselves to an extremely high standard and and myself included as far as how we operate.
I was just wondering if there were any ordinances related to your business as apparently there are in the city. So you're not aware of any ordinances?
No, sir.
What's the current occupancy rate at St. Peters today?
Max is ninety seven. And that's based on square footage and the percentage of the building that's playroom space, which is sixty two percent roughly. We average about seventy five dogs a day. And when our rooms max out, we we use our app as a great tool to understand what numbers of dogs are going to be in our facility. And if we have to turn dogs away based on the our volume, it's definitely something we do for safety purposes. So we use
So you anticipate maximum at the Manchester Meadows of how many occupants?
A hundred and twenty five based off the square footage and sixty seven percent of that being playroom space.
I'm just curious, is there a sales tax related to this?
No, sir. There's no retail currently. Our, our focus is daycare. So that's our constant. And and as of right now, we have no retail. Our lobby is also closed to the public because we do everything for on dedicated parking. So A, I don't want to be a COVID hotspot. I don't want to, I don't want people coming into our lobby when it's unnecessary. We're extremely efficient when it comes to pickup and drop off. We walk our dogs out to to the car. Pet parents don't even have to get out of the car. So that, that's where we're at and have been since February or March of this year for that location.
Who are the tenants that are adjacent to your proposed business?
There's only one and it's a Kumon Math Center.
And from all this insulated, soundproofing, this math center is not going to hear a lot of barking dogs.
No, sir. So when I first opened the store in St. Peters, we, we want to keep our, our neighbors happy. So the idea is to work together. We have great clips next to us in St. Peters and I know the owner of the franchise. I know the manager of the location. We talk constantly. They've had no issues with any sounds and I, and I was very diligent on it the first, first week, first thirty days, first sixty days and and they're they know if they hear anything to come to me and to let me know. And I, and I've not had that happen.
So in St. Peters, who are the tenants that are adjacent to your business here?
There's one. So it's an end cap, just like Manchester Meadows, and it's great clips. It's a haircut place.
Okay. And I, I'm just curious, how much is it to board a dog per day, not overnight?
It can vary on on different levels. So a, a day of daycare, straight up, one day is thirty two dollars. We have a lot of pups who come in two, three days a week and the best bang for their buck is our, is our monthly memberships, which you could come down to as much as twenty five dollars a day. So it varies on the frequency of the dog is probably the best answer, but we have anywhere from thirty two to twenty five per visit per day.
So the more you use it, the less the cost?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Bolzina.
Yeah, a very good presentation. Learned a lot on your activities. I'm a little bit accustomed to noise and tenant space and had to deal with Orange Theory when they came to town and wanted to be next to somebody else. And if you know anything about Orange Theory, it was a very high intense exercise type program that was accompanied by loud music. So I saw your wall sections. I listened to your presentation and there was things about sound baths, but the detail shows R thirteen, which of course is a thermal, thermal type bat. It's not a it's not a sound retarding material. And I was looking for an STC rating on your wall sections and I didn't see one. Do you know what kind of STC rating you are trying to achieve on your demising wall?
I don't, but I don't find anything for it.
And on the south wall that does border Kumon, are you adding an additional wall? Are you just modifying the existing demising wall?
It's modifying the existing wall between tenants on the Dogtopia side.
So and the, the question would be, what would be the ultimate STC rating for the wall? I think you'd be better off just adding a wall inside that's like one of your sections does show that one of the possibilities is to add a wall up against the existing wall. I think that's possibility.
Type D?
D, yeah.
Yes, sir. So that, that would be the one that would be between Dogtopia and the Kumon Math Center.
Okay, so you would be adding a wall to whatever existing demising wall would be there?
Yes, sir. Yeah. So it'd be additional sound bad insulation on top of the existing wall between the two and that would be type D.
So you would not be adverse to some condition that said that you would do that? My only reservation would be you know, the R thirteen bat, which is not a sound type insulation rating. And you probably need to achieve, my goal would be that you would be able to achieve an STC rating of fifty, which would probably be pretty easy if that existing wall goes all the way up to the roof.
Yeah, it goes floor to deck and it, it's required by not only myself, but Dogtopia. So they don't, they also approve the schematics. And they want to, the brand to be constant across the nation. So it type D is the wall that will is used in St. Peters. It's the wall that's going to be used store two. So that, that is the Florida deck, sound bath for, for that's shared space.
Yeah, but the important thing is that there is an existing demising wall there at Kumon. And the important thing we're trying to stress here is that you're going to actually add another wall in front of that. So that, that's good. The courtyard, and I don't know how closely you've looked at the area behind the building. There are several roof downspouts that come down the side of that building and I couldn't tell from your pictures whether those downspouts discharge to the parking lot or they go underground or what they do. Do you know?
Let me just double check for you. They go down through the asphalt. And then there's also, I guess the other thing I forgot to include, there, there are gas meters in the back of the building. And and for safety purposes and for access to it for repairs, maintenance over the years. There, there is a way to get back there through the outdoor playroom as well, too. So I, I know that was a in a question from RPI, who is the landlord. And then also something that Ryan brought up as well, too.
Right. I mean, you're, there was two different plan. One had a squared off courtyard and one had an angle wall at the northwest corner. Which one are we getting, you know?
The one that I, so I sent it, I, I just got it about a week ago. So I was in the middle of site survey, which you need prior to doing this schematic and I sent it about a week ago and I can pull it up on my screen again if you'd like.
Well, we've got several plans here. I, I guess we need to know which one we're approving.
Yep, I'd be happy to pull it up right now.
One has a the corner cut off at an angle and one is square. One doesn't show any exits out of the courtyard. One does. And the one you showed tonight is square with some dotted lines, which I have some questions about.
Yep. So if my screen is shared right now, this is the updated schematic for Manchester Meadows.
Okay, so what are the dashed lines that separate it into two areas?
It's an eight foot privacy fence. So just like the pictures in the in the PowerPoint for our existing St. Peters location, it's an eight foot privacy fence and the gap between outdoor play area and outdoor play area is to be able to service those gas meters that are back there, but also a safety thing for our pups as well, too.
Wow, okay. All right. Now, the other question, and it's more of a building permit issue than a zoning issue. The back doors of this facility are to some extent exit doors that would be required. And dumping people in a fenced off area. How are we letting them get out?
There is a door in each outdoor area, which I can show you on St. Peters. So this is the existing. So that, that top right photo with that black between the two bollards is the additional door to get out as well, too.
So is that equipped with some kind of latch that keeps people from coming in, but you can always exit?
Correct, yeah. So it's a safety thing from just, correct. So it's a safety thing from not being able to open it from the outside. And it also has a punch on the inside to open it for any type of fire safety or anything along those lines.
Okay, very good. Very good. And I guess I got a little bit confused with Dr. O'Mell's question. Is there any overnight dogs allowed?
Yes, so we offer, so daycares are constant, but we offer boarding as well, too. Anyone who boards with us is also included in daycare as well. So what our pet parents enjoy about our facility is that they get to watch their dogs throughout the day. They're socializing, exercising, making friends, which is super cool. But they're, they're playing throughout the day. So it's not your traditional, like kennel run where they're stuck in a small area, you know, all day, all night. So every dog that boards with us is also a daycare dog as well, too. So it's extremely seasonal for, for boarding. So it's a service that we offer for our pet parents who maybe go out of town for the weekend or in this case, travel somewhere for a couple of hours and don't bring their pup with them.
So would you or would you not have any objection to a condition that said that no overnight dogs would be kept outdoors? That's not your practice, right? That would not be your practice, right?
It's already in there.
No, sir. Yeah.
It's, it's already a condition.
Yeah, I think it's
Condition G.
Yeah.
Which one?
Yes.
Position G.
It's agenda.
I see it. I see it. That's good. The I got one more before I hand it off to anyone else. The obviously this is in a shopping center. And you probably have a, a drop off procedure of some sort. So would people just have to stop in that driving lane or how, how, how are you going to work with the landlord, how, a drop off zone?
That's a great question. So I have, in the lease, we have three dedicated parking spots for pet parents just for Dogtopia. So we go out and grab dogs from the car. Pet parents don't have to get out. We bring them inside. So it's a super quick drop off. Pickup's the same way. We have, we have a request on our Dogtopia app where they'll say, hey, Scruffy's mom is ten minutes away. And we'll get that dog prepared and ready for pickup at the end of the day. So we have dedicated parking for it. Being efficient is the probably the easiest way to do it. So we want to, we want to be as safe as possible with it and keep that dedicated parking is as close to the building where there's existing parking as well, too, on the north side of that space.
Okay, because I don't know what the deal is with the landlord and Home Depot, but the Home Depot seems to be take, be taking more and more of that north parking area for seasonal sales. So if you can get dedicated spaces on the north side, obviously that would be ideal for you.
Yes, sir. And that, that's something I'm working with on them. I had their VP Um, I had their VP of, uh, Asset Management come out last Friday to tour the facility at St. Peters. Um, and I, and I was really, I really stressed the dedicated parking because we have it at St. Peters. Um, it's huge for safety. Um, it's huge for efficiency as well, too. So I showed them that. I, I showed them it in, in, in the works as well, too. So, uh, lunchtime pickup, drop off. So they, they got to see it. Um, so it's part of our, uh, lease as well, too.
Okay, so, uh, I guess maybe we can help you, uh, if we make it a condition that you have dedicated, three dedicated parking spots on the north side of the building. Would that help you at all with your landlord?
Um, I, I don't think they're opposed to it. So I, I mean, it's, I don't see an issue with it whatsoever because it's something that's, uh, it's huge for me. So that's fine.
Well, I mean, right now, it's an ask from you to the landlord. But if the city said it's a requirement, it seems like it would make your life a little easier.
That, that would be helpful.
Okay, all right. Uh, that's all I have.
Mr. Cooch.
Thank you.
A question, Mr. Zrakel. Do, while under your care, are the do, do the dogs ever leave the, the, the premises, whether during the day or boarding?
Uh, only for pickup and drop off with pet parents. That's it. So the big thing is doors between dogs. Um, through the 3D tour, I mean, we have four or five doors just to get back to our toy box room. So the safety aspect of doors between dogs, so there's no dogs escaping or being in rooms that they shouldn't be in. Any room where there is a dog, there's always a person in there. Um, so we're, we're, safeties are, are top standard there. So to answer your question is, no, sir, they don't leave the building unless they're being picked up or drop off by pet parent.
Okay, I'll never see a dog behind the building as I leave Home Depot.
That's not the plan. It didn't come from us.
Got it.
Are there questions or discussion? Mr. Spencer, I guess the first item is the zoning text amendment that would even allow us to have a pet daycare, correct?
Yes, sir. Um, when, when Zach approached me about the, the use, I looked in the code. We have kennel. We have a definition for kennel. This isn't a kennel. This isn't a breeding boarding, uh, facility. Um, you know, this is an entirely new use. And, uh, so when it, when that happens, staff generates a definition, um, and also a location and a status of that location. So, uh, we, there's a draft definition for pet daycare before you, there, um, staff's proposing that it be a conditional use only in commercial districts. Uh, we've included a map showing where those commercial districts are, are located. And then typically, when we add a new use, we also add a parking ratio. Um, so staff has generated a draft, uh, parking ratio based on, um, review of other pet daycares and how they're regulated, um, by other communities.
Well, received any public comments about either item three or four?
Uh, no, staff has not received any comments.
Can I have?
I got, I have, I'm sorry, I have one question, guys. Um, it is to item four, page three on conditions, and it is condition M. Um, all, all of these conditions look great. I agree with all of them as well, too. I have, I have respective, respectfully request, uh, to add three words to condition M, and it's the second sentence. So it, right now, it currently reads the maximum number of animals to be boarded overnight shall be 62. Um, with, with boarding being cyclical, based on seasonality, and us being a one stop shop, we, we don't want to, you know, we want to make it easy for our pet parents, uh, to utilize our services. I, I just request that that sentence state, the maximum number of animals to be boarded overnight shall be an average of 62, and that, that's my only request.
In a, in a week's period of time, I think that's what we talked about, Zach. Is that we, we need to specify a period of time that the average would cover?
That'd be one, one month would be fine.
Ryan, can I ask where the 62 came from in the first place?
It's, it's half of the maximum capacity. Um, staff's intent is that to, for this to be a pet daycare, um, it's primary business needs to be daycare, and by maintaining 50%, um, that's, that's a way to help ensure that, that it remains a, a pet daycare, not a kennel, not an overnight boarding facility. Um, uh, Zach had brought up that this, he was concerned about that specific line just because of, um, we're, we're, we're entering a period now, the holiday season, Thanksgiving, Christmas. Those are periods where there's intense, um, interest in, in overnight boarding because of travel and vacations. So he was, he was concerned about a specific, uh, number and wanted it to be more of an average. Um, and I think what we talked about, Zach, was in a week period, a month, week. Um, I'll leave it up to the, to board, uh, the planning zoning commission to decide what is, um, reasonable. But, uh, that makes sense. I mean, if, if, they're obviously going to be high intensity periods of the year, um, where there's going to be a lot of demand, um, and the holidays are, are one of those periods.
Yep. And, and as an example, uh, at St. Peters, we have two dogs boarding tonight. Um, you get to December 25th, it's a much different thought process for pet parents because of travel. Um, so the, the demand is, is constant for daycare with, uh, seasonality fluctuation for boarding. So that, that's my only interest in that.
Alderman Franchi?
What is, in terms of, I, I know you have to have crates for these dogs that are boarding overnight. What is the maximum number that you could actually physically house overnight?
Uh, the 125, but that's not, that, that's not what our business.
You have 125 crates that you could.
Yeah. Correct. So our, our business is daycare focused, um, and, and that's why I feel comfortable with this, um, having a restriction on it as well, too. If, if I didn't, I, you know, I, I would say otherwise, but I'm totally fine with the restriction because our business is, is built around, and our, our facility is built around daycare. Um, it's constant. We want our, our pups to be socialized. Uh, we want to enrich the lives of pet parenthood as well, too, in the community. So, um, what we're really, what Dogtopia is all about is daycare and, and, um, and I'm a true believer and, and I love it, and it's, it's super nice.
Mr. McCain?
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I have a concern with the average number, and, and I'm fine with saying we have seasonal, we set seasonal numbers, but I guess this is a question for staff. Is an average number even enforceable? Because you'd walk in there and say, how many dogs do you have? And they'd say, we have 80, but last night we had two, and you'd have to end up going through their books for the last week or month to try and figure out what the average number is. So I guess, would it not be better to say, we know there's seasonality in this, in the, the conditional use permit, we'll define times that those numbers can be up? Uh, I'm just trying to figure out, I guess, the question to staff, is it enforceable to actually put something like a weekly or a monthly average?
It's enforceable? Is it easy to enforce? Absolutely not. It'd be very difficult. Um, I, I agree that you're, what, the method you're proposing would probably be more straightforward. Um, if there's an acceptable, you know, percentage increase based on, um, time of year. Um, you know, if we defined, you know, a period of time where they can potentially, you know, be 20% greater than, than what the, the normal percentage is or something like that.
We like to make things easy for you. So we like.
We have a, we have a system called Pet Exec that's used nationwide. So it's, it's, I could pull a month's numbers in five minutes. Um, the longest part would be just logging in, to be honest with you. So, um, I don't have an issue showing that information or providing it whatsoever.
Ryan, a question for you. I mean, we, we don't want it to be, so if it was, if the primary use, I'm just, I'm thinking through this. Do, do I care if there are 62 dogs there tonight, or 70 dogs there tonight, or 80 dogs there tonight, or 125 dogs there tonight, really? Why do I, why do I care about that as a town and country resident? If the dog says not getting out and they're being cared for, like, what's the, what's the problem if that number goes up?
Or more to the point, Rob, every night, or every night, yeah, what's?
Well, and it change, but it changes the definition of the, of the, we're calling this a daycare, a dog daycare, not a kennel. So if, if it wants to be a kennel, we should call it a kennel. But if they want to be a daycare, we're defining a different metric, and that shouldn't be the same as a kennel, I wouldn't think, unless you want to not care, say kennel slash daycare.
Right. I wanted the primary focus to be, be daycare and to, to be somewhat limited on the overnight. And that's why staff said it at 50%. Um, that was just, you know, looking at it, it seemed like a reasonable number. Um, again, that's why I think it's, it's also reasonable that that number can increase based on seasonality. Like, like Zach said, he's got two dogs overnight right now at St. Peters. And in a month, you know, he, he could be, um, you know, well, you know, 50, 60, 70 dogs, who knows? Um, so it just depends on, on, uh, the time of year and demand and so forth. Um, but staff wanted it to be primarily a pet daycare to focus on that.
And so could, so could we make, could we make this easier to say that, uh, you know, the, the average number is to be required on demand? I mean, I'm trying to figure out an easy way for you guys to enforce this. And it's, it's seems tough to me to say, you're going to walk in and try and count the dogs. I think there's got to be a way to enforce a 62 limit if we're going to put a 62 limit on. Um, and that's the concern I have. So if there is a system that they use, uh, that might be part of this, um, condition M would be to say, you know, uh, Petopia is required to, um, maintain a, a, a report that we can come in and demand at any time we want. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure that out because it doesn't seem like that's an enforceable thing that we have there.
Mr. White?
Are there any added restrictions on kennels for boarding overnight that ought to be applied to this eventuality? In other words, is this, is this a way of circumventing some of the kennel restrictions?
Who's that directed to?
A question.
Ask question, yeah.
Mr. Spencer, can you?
Do we have different, do we have this added restrictions for kennels than we do on the, on the daycare that we're proposing?
From a, from a zoning.
Seems to me it's, it's de facto a kennel for, uh, two, two nights a, a month or Thanksgiving or whatever. It's effectively a kennel. So it should be covered by any kennel restrictions.
When you say kennel restrictions, there's no, we don't have kennel restrictions. Um, we define kennel as.
Question, I didn't know.
Training. Again, I, I, I was limiting it just because this is honestly, this is a new concept for Town and Country. We don't, I don't believe we have any.
Mr. Bolzina?
Yeah, I'm, um, uh, I, I guess that was a, a great question, Granville. You know, do we have anything pertaining to kennels? But, uh, and our, our first image of a kennel is something that has indoor and outdoor, uh, you know, spaces for the, for the pets. Uh, I think we have a couple of them that border Town and Country, one on Manchester Road and one on Wyman Road. But, um, so we haven't, I guess, addressed that. But I, I, just trying to stay logically with this new concept of daycare for pets. I think it would be inconsistent to allow overnight for a number that is any more than 50% because then it becomes something else. So I, I think the, I think the rationale for going at the 50% was a good one.
Alderman Franchi?
So I'm just reading, um, the definition of kennel from our city code, but that Ryan included in the first page of the memo. And it does seem to have a very, you know, it's defined very differently than the daycare that we're looking at, and really only mentions the word boarding in that first sentence. It's, seems like it's more focused on the selling, breeding, and training. Um, it, so it, I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out an, an easier way. I do think that the enforcement of 62 or an average of 62 is going to be really difficult. Um, and so I'm wondering if there's a different percentage. I, I mean, realistically, if you were, say, it's your peak holiday season, would you ever have 125 dogs in boarding over the holidays? Is that a normal, but, you know, is that a normal number that you would take in? Or do you have self-imposed limits for boarding?
Self-impose, uh, it's a good question. So the self-imposed limit would, would be this, uh, a, a comfort number would be like the average of 62 because there'll be some days like today where we have two, and there'll be days on weekends like this weekend, we have 20. Um, and then Tuesday, we have zero of next week. So it, it fluctuates. So that's why.
But on the, but say on the, but say on a really high day, say Christmas time or Thanksgiving, what is, what is your high number for those times? I mean, do you max out your capacity at 125? So what is your self-imposed max capacity for your peak timeframe?
Zach, can I, can I ask Alderman Franchi's question a very, a diff, slightly different way? At what point do you say no to somebody?
Yes.
That's what she's getting at.
But what's your, what's your high number even at the peak holiday season?
Uh, 100 would be the, the max. Or in St. Peter's case, 95, 97, right around there.
Okay.
Mr. Cooch.
Uh, it, um, so just listening to the whole conversation around max, um, I, I, I'm not sure what, when, when a daycare becomes a kennel. Um, but I, I, I can appreciate the need for a nighttime average max. What I'm hearing, uh, in my simple mathematic mind, an average seems to be the easiest method to, for Dogtopia to manage and for the city to manage if we find it necessary to manage, or not man, wrong word, manage, um, to oversee. Um, so I, to me, average makes sense. Um, it seems to me if we want to be more specific, we, we could establish an average and say, but not to exceed X on any given day. And, you know, we can discuss what X is. I'm hearing 100. Um, maybe that's too high, maybe it's not. Um, but it could be a, it could be a compound sentence, if you would.
Mr. Spencer?
I was gonna say, 100 for this store would be 80% of capacity.
Something different than daycare.
Well, um, further, further discussion, we could back up to, in the interest of trying to get this moving forward, why don't we back up to the zoning code amendment, agenda item number three, and I'll ask if I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Cooch, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Franchi. Any discussion or questions on agenda item number three? Mr. White?
Exhibit D, we're talking of three parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, but we've got much bigger square footage than, uh, 1,000. Do we need to change that number for the number of parking spaces? And would that help with our?
It's a ratio. It's.
Discussion on.
It's three per.
But didn't I read somewhere that we're just having three dedicated spaces on the, um, on the parking lot as it stands right now?
It's parked minimums are based on a ratio, um, typically about, uh, a number per thousand square feet of gross floor area of a use. So in this case, um, a total of 17 parking spaces would be required with a, a ratio of, of three per thousand. a ratio of of three per thousand gross floor area. Um, so it's not just they don't, we're not requiring that they only have three spaces. We're requiring they have three per thousand square foot of of.
And these are not dead, and these are not dedicated spaces necessarily. This would be across the entire shopping center.
Twenty-five.
Repairability. Yes, in other words, they could they could park over by total line, in other words. There's plenty of space there, maybe. Okay.
Further questions or discussion on item three?
So are we going to attack number three before number four or is this?
Yes.
No, yeah, we can't have four without three, so.
Okay, all right. So um, I guess this brings up the whole subject of if we're going to allow this new category of daycare, pet care. You know, do we want in general to have some restrictions? I know it's a conditional use permit, and we can look at each one individually and dream up new conditions every time. But are there some basic conditions that we think should be appropriate for this new use? I mean, the one that comes to my mind already is like the number of pets that would be allowed per square foot in a facility could be an important criteria, I think, for any anytime somebody wants to do this. And then this whole thing about daycare, night care being combined, certainly the limitation on that. So the question for me is that if we want to put this new category in our zoning ordinance, do we want to just rely on conditional use permit every time? And whether we like the proposal or don't like the proposal, but should there be some basic criteria that come before this conditional use permit criteria?
On the one hand, I would think yes, but then when I look at how many commercial districts are available for this to to be in, I think there's, you know, two or two or three other possibilities that we wait we might ever see again.
Well, the one that is of most concern is Mason and Clayton, obviously. Yeah. Have dogs outside behind any structure there close to to some residences. This one is ideal because behind the building is not Town and Country. Uh, so we don't really care, and it's an office industrial use anyway, separated by the creek. So but that's not going to happen at Mason and Clayton, and it's not going to happen at one of the other sites. Uh, so um, I, you know, I I always kind of have this objection when we're faced with changing our zoning ordinance, special for someone who is an applicant. I'm not disparaging the applicant. I think it's a great use of this space, and we need to be able to use our shopping centers. It's too bad that there's no sales tax, but you know, maybe someday there will be. But uh, I I just hate to like legislate so quickly without thinking through things like a basic criteria for daycare, pet daycare. And I think, you know, one of the important thing is how many pets do we want to allow somebody to put in a building at one time? This may be a great operator, seems to be, but the next operator may not be. So um, I'm concerned about it.
Alderman Frauci.
So I think that's one of the benefits of having it as a conditional use because we're able to look site by site. Uh, so if this was at Mason and Clayton, and it was um, that area that backs up to uh, the condos, um, then certainly that would be a condition that you could take into account. Um, I believe originally there was talk about trying to put a a doggy daycare over at Town Square. Um, that was that was something that was discussed very early on in that planning process. Um, the developer came came to us with that idea. Um, and that that didn't go anywhere because they that conditions there were not such um, that that anyone thought that was a good idea. Um, that said, leaving it as a conditional use allows you to go site by site. It doesn't set precedent. Um, and as a result, I think it's actually almost beneficial that it's a conditional use because of the lack of precedent. So otherwise, you may have somebody who comes in and says, well, I can put it here because it's a commercial district, and you allow this in a commercial district, and Mason and Clayton is commercial, and therefore I'm going to be able to put it there without having to take some of those things into account.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKnight.
I think I I agree with Alderman Frauci. I think this also gives us some flexibility to allow for businesses and changes in the businesses to make sure that we can accommodate new types of businesses, new people coming in, which is what we should be doing as a city, but also provide us the limitations we might need so that we don't end up with this as being a commercial, uh, something where somebody comes into a commercial district and says, I have a right to do this because it's, you know, within my rights. Uh, it's in within the definitions. So I think it actually helps in that way, and it it gives us flexibility. But it also, and it gives us flexibility to allow for new types of businesses with this type of model. Um, I think in the future, we may want to consider building it into the commercial district if we want it, if we if it's successful and we want to do that. But this gives us a great way to give it give new new types of businesses a try without necessarily incorporating them into our long-term planning.
It was not in our comprehensive plan.
Did not come up in the discussion. Agree with Mr. Bolzino.
But it was not excluded.
That's a, I think it would be nice to have some, uh, you know, to think that through. But on the other hand, I'm hesitant to uh, hold up this applicant while we do the research to figure out what those numbers should be. So that's.
There's nothing stopping us. There's nothing stopping us from carrying that forward. I mean, if we want to, I think in this case, I'm looking at it saying in the position that this is, this is an ideal loc ideal location for this type of business. Because not necessarily because of the reasons Mr. Bolzino, Commissioner Bolzino defined, because it's not our not Town and Country behind it, the fact that it is in the midst of a commercial district, it's not going to be the noises from this are not going to be um, impacting any of our any citizens in any city nearby. Um, except, you know, potentially a a construction, you know, something going on in a in a commercial space, I should say. So.
And the Kumon kids.
And the Kumon kids, but I think that's, I think we're addressing that as part of the part of the uh, conditional use. So.
Mr. Kujin.
We have a a second in motion on the on the floor, do we not?
This is discussion, yes.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to make, I thought my memory served me right.
Further discussion on uh, item number three.
Would uh, and listen, I think our attorney is still probably listening. Would it be um, spot zoning or special treatment if for some reason we did not include the Mason Clayton commercial property in an allowable place for this use?
You you mean specifically exclude one property from where this would be a permitted use?
Well, there's four red parcels marked on the proposed bill. Uh, three of the four have adjacencies to non-Town and Country parcels. And to the extent that we care less about people that are not in Town and Country than we care about residents of Town and Country, that uh, would it be appropriate to limit this allowable special conditional use to all of them, but the one that is completely surrounded by Town and Country residents?
I mean, I I don't believe that would qualify as spot zoning, you know, generally speaking, when you make, you know, let uh, zoning decisions and the city makes zoning decisions, you base it on the kind of considerations and good planning and uh, practice as opposed necessarily uh, singling out non uh, non-residents. But I mean, if the concern is driven by the fact that, you know, you're concerned about particular locations that are too close to residential properties.
That's my.
Regardless of what city said residential properties uh, are located in that that to me would be a valid consideration. And absolutely, you can, you know, just because um, you open up a particular use to a commercial zoning district doesn't mean under certain circumstances that every, you know, every property in that zoning district has to be allowed for that use, you know.
Okay, all right.
And I think there's, I think there's a rational, rational reason to exclude that because of the proximity to to housing nearby. I mean, you can't, I don't know where you put one of these in that shopping district without having it be heard very, very much. In the other district, in the other commercial districts, they're large enough that you could find a place in there that you could fit one that wouldn't be impacting to um, to homes nearby or to residents nearby.
And that and that's pretty common that we do say, you know, for a number of uses that these uses cannot be, you know, over, you know, close or within a certain distance of residential properties.
Well, the one also up at forty and one forty-one has adjacencies to Cedar Springs, uh, which would have the same issues if uh, and I'm not sure that red blob is correct because I thought there was that farmer seminary or something between the shopping center and the.
It's an abbey.
It's an, yeah.
An abbey.
But a and Dennis, and Dennis, my point there was that uh, you could find a spot in that parking space, in the in that commercial zone that was far enough away from from housing that it wouldn't be a problem. I don't know that you could do that in that small small spot in Mason and Clayton.
No, it either disturbed the park or somebody that was in a.
Alderman Frauci.
I guess one question I have for Ed, I I mean, because we're looking at this as a conditional use permit for this particular applicant. Um, and I I know that we're we're adding some language here for for daycares for pets in in item three, but as a conditional use. So would it be normal for us to locationally I I guess discriminate against one commercial zone over another in a conditional use? Or would that be done more in a different part of the zoning code if we actually added this as a permitted use as as opposed to a conditional use? But it seems to me that the condition, the very, the very nature of the conditional use permit is to take into account residential areas in this particular shopping center, um, something else in another. If we limit this now in a conditional use, we have no idea what will change with those properties in the future. And we would then need to go back and actually reconstitute the code, make amendments to the code in order to change that conditional use allowance. It seems to me that instead we have the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Aldermen to take into account the conditions of each of those sites at the time an applicant comes forward.
So, yeah, I I think absolutely there are a couple of different ways of looking at it. There are situations where we place restrictions and limitations on certain conditional uses, you know, um, like medical marijuana, things like that, you know, that the they're conditional uses, but they still can't be located within X feet of.
A thousand feet of it, right.
Uh, but I I would agree with you that generally speaking, the way, and and I I think one of the good things of the way CUPs operate is it it does. It allows the P and Z and ultimately the board that flexibility and also that protective, you know, those protections to look at the characteristics that have to be satisfied for a CUP and obviously impact uh, on the surrounding properties and the nature of the surrounding properties are things you think about. So if it's a an intense commercial use next to a residential property, that's something that you would factor in. So I think, and you know, so I think you you it's kind of right on both. Uh, that you you absolutely can choose to put other restrictions on a CUP, but I don't think that that's a rarity, not the uh, the normal approach. And as you say, you know, the way the CUP operates, it gives you the ability to look at those individual properties and see if the the surrounding area is appropriate or not.
Well, let me ask this, if it's if it's a permitted conditional use and this commission places so many conditions on an applicant that it becomes not permitted, do they have some kind of action against this city?
That you you mean an allowable conditional use, right? Not a permitted conditional use.
Right.
Right. Um, what, you you know, at the end of the day, the decision uh, whether a city grants or denies a CUP is always going to be subject if an applicant is aggrieved to appeal, just like a decision to not rezone. So even let's say we just said this is an outright prohibited use period. A property owner could come and and seek a text amendment saying, I want you to make this a permitted use. And if the city says no, that decision could be challenged, you know. So any any zoning decision made um, is subject to review. A good thing about conditional use permit is it establishes a framework and a criteria that allows the city to say, look, our decision was rational and based on the criteria that was brought before us, you know. Um, so um, you know, loading up uh, requirements on a CUP, you obviously, the harder you make it, the more likely is that someone's not going to get it. And if someone doesn't get something, the more likely they are to challenge it. But like I say, that could happen even if you say, you know what, it's a prohibited use period, and you'd need a text amendment.
Well, I don't know if I have any support for deleting Mason and Clayton from the allowable sites that would permit a conditional use permit for this particular use, but I would certainly entertain some support for it.
Did we, didn't we do something similar with the the cannabis um, ordinance that came through? We we limited it by saying it couldn't be within X feet of a residence, and that effectively blocked out a couple of spots, including probably Clayton Mason.
There was a law related to um, distance from schools and and other such facilities, but I believe that came from state.
That was from schools. That wasn't from residences. That's what it was. Okay.
Yeah, and and we we brought that in, I believe, Ed, if I'm correct, that came down as an allowable um, distance by the state.
Correct. So what what it was of that is we didn't have to put those uh, restrictions in there.
But we could.
But we were allowed up to a thou a thousand feet, and that's what the city opted to do. But yes, so that's an example of a situation where it was a conditional use permit is the sell-up. But it's not just all properties within this commercial district are eligible to apply for a CUP. It's you have to be in this zoning district, and you have to comply with these other, you know, location requirements as well.
And really, a thousand feet for this particular property would not work. Um, because keep in mind that just behind Home Depot is actually suburban estate um, Town and Country. Right behind Home Depot, so that that is the closest residential property to this facility. Um, so you'd have to go out and measure. I don't know how many feet that is. Ryan could probably tell us on a fancy map. But um, but so if we were going to limit these types of facilities to within a certain distance from a residential facility, we would need to take that into account for a majority of these sites because Cedar Springs is there. The abbey that's there is um, is not commercially zoned um, up in Ward Four. Um, over at Town and Country Crossing, keep in mind that it may not be Town and Country, but there is a lot of residential from a neighboring city right there behind um, where the Stein Martin Target is. We also in Town and Country Crossing have residential Town and Country homes. So um, that distance would be difficult, and I I really see the conditional use permit in this particular application as being a good way to to control those things.
Exactly. Thank you.
McKnight.
Uh, just a response to Commissioner Bolzino, I actually, I thought through your your thinking there, and I actually, I would not give support to that primarily because there could be a possibility of a doggy daycare that doesn't have an outdoor location. Basically, they have some indoor functionality and it's fully soundproofed, and would I have a problem with that? I think that would be something that would depend on the conditional use. So um, I think it probably does make sense to include all of them and then to leave it as a a conditional use that we can measure all of these factors when we think about them. use that we can measure all of these factors when we think about them.
Alderman Frauci.
And keep in mind that Lola and Penelope's was located in, in that shopping center at Mason and Clayton. And while they weren't a doggy daycare, they were a grooming facility. And as a result, had dogs there all day long who were dropped off in the morning and picked up in the evening for, for grooming services. So it isn't unheard of for us to have a pet-related facility at Mason and Clayton. I think they moved to Lamp and Lantern now though, but my point is it, it has been there at that location.
All right. Well, unless somebody has an objection, I'm going to ask Ms. Lowell to call the roll. Last call for comments, questions.
This is agenda item number three, correct?
Agenda item three only, correct. Ms. Lowell, you call the roll.
Mr. Kuchin.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Munzel.
Yes.
Chairman Seema.
Aye.
Alderman Frauci.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. McKnight?
Yes.
Dr. O'Mel?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Bolazina?
Even though our world is going to the dogs, I will vote yes.
And Ms. Miller?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, we do have findings on this. Uh, Dr. O'Mel is your, is the official finder of this, uh, commission. Who would you like to take a whack at?
So we'll do the seven all at the same time and then vote on it.
Great.
There is a public need for the proposed use, the proposed amendment and proposed use are in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The property in question is suitable for the uses permitted under the proposed zoning. There are adequate public facilities such as a sewer and water and other required public services. The public health, safety and general welfare will not be damaged. Land values of adjoining properties will not be damaged. The adoption of a proposed amendment is in the public interest and is not solely for the interest of the applicant.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion appears to carry unanimously. All right, agenda item four is the actual conditional use permit for this location. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We got a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Kuchin. All right, any discussion or amendments?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clarified, that, that motion was to improve with the conditions A through N, correct?
It was.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it was on the record.
Mr. Bolazina.
Yes, I have a proposed amendment to the conditions of the conditional use permit.
Please.
Uh, the first one would be to modify condition N. And instead of saying a minimum R13, I would delete that and insert a minimum STC rating of 50. And I don't think, I, and I don't think I need the words R far saving in there either. So delete R13, R far saving, and then put minimum STC 50, sound bat and shall extend to the roof. And I think our applicant is okay with that.
I, I reached out to our director of design and I got an answer for you for the STC rating at 65 and above. So.
Perfect.
Yep.
Well, we use, we use 50 for demising walls in apartments. 65 is wonderful.
Perfect.
And that's pretty much what we tried to use at Orange Theory because of their activity. But I didn't think you were going to be as loud as Orange Theory.
Not the plan. We just want to make sure we're keeping everybody happy.
Okay, all right. That was seconded by Mr. White, I believe.
Correct.
All right, any further discussion or amendments?
Yes. Or, or do we?
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess we need to, we need to vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Be opposed. Motion appears to carry unanimously. All right, now.
Good. Next one. Then this would be O. And the O would be three dedicated parking spaces, spaces shall be provided at the north side of the tenant space to allow for drop off and pick off of pets.
Do I have a second?
Did we get a second?
Not yet.
I'll second.
Kuchin, seconded, thank you. Discussion.
I think this is important because we don't want the dedicated spaces on the other side of the driving lane, which, I mean, if you go to the stores along there, most people are parking, you know, on the other side of the driving lane and walking across the traffic to get to the store. We don't want that to happen with people dragging dogs, you know? We want them to be on the same side of the street. We want it convenient. We want to encourage the landlord to accommodate this tenant, to give him what he needs for a safe passage of the dog to the store.
Mr. White.
Aye, aye, of course. However, I have a concern. I wonder if that space is used by large trucks backing into the Home Depot Garden Center?
It is not. They use.
It's difficult.
No, it is not.
It's difficult to see, to, you know, to visualize that today, here as we are this evening. Um, I don't want to chop off some area which has been used for the last 20 years or more by Home Depot.
Well.
Or, or the Home Depot trucks.
My experience, because I'm a Home Depot junkie, and Home Depot has been capitalizing that area with seasonal products. And the trucks go around the entire perimeter of the building and around the back way of that building. So, I mean, they do go in front of the store and they do maneuver over there, but they don't maneuver. I mean, Home Depot uses up the space itself. So that should tell you something.
Alderman Frauci.
So I have a quick question. Are you suggesting the, the dedicated spots have to be in the area where Home Depot, like the, the bottom picture where they keep their plants outside?
No, because they can, no, no, they can, no. They can dedicate, right adjacent to the building is adequate parking spaces that used to be used by the smoke shop. There are, there are spaces right there.
So right along the building?
Right there, right there, right there.
There's, there are still spaces there?
Mr. McKnight.
Um, Mr. Chair, I, I have to, I have to think that it's the applicant's desire to have parking spaces like that too, but I'm not sure that I can justify saying that they're going to have to negotiate with the, the, the commercial building to, to allocate space in that spot because we said so. I guess I'm looking at it saying there's a shopping center down this, there's a, there's a grocery store down the way and people are running carts back and forth across that same road. So I'm not sure that I see difference really in a dog versus a shopping center, you know, pushing a shopping cart along and doing all those types of things. So I, I see that, I see Commissioner Bolazina's point, but I would think it's in the applicant's best interest to try and find that as well. I don't know that it needs to be part of a conditional use.
Well, in response, I was trying to help the applicant. He thought it might be helpful. I think sometimes, I, I don't want the parking to be on the other side of the driveline. I know grocery carts, if you're going to do a grocery cart, you're in control of that. I'm not necessarily in control of a Great Dane when I'm walking it. So, uh, uh, you know, help the guy, give him some parking spaces.
Guess one question is if for some reason he's not able to work in parking spaces, does that mean he has to come back in front of us?
Yes.
The landlord will give in, believe me, he will give in. You can't rent space right now. This guy is a godsend that is landlord.
I, I'm comfortable with the landlord, uh, work, working directly with them. Um, I have a good relationship with them. They're looking to work with corporate Dogtopia to, exactly what you were saying, um, to be tenants in, in spaces that aren't filled. So, um, out of the 140 places that they have and Dogtopia is looking to have 400 spaces. So I, I'm comfortable, um, working with them and getting those dedicated spots in exactly where you're talking about, where they're up against the building, which is the safest place to have them. Um, and I, I'm totally fine with doing the work to get it completed as well too, because it's a game changer for me.
Okay, that's easy.
In that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion appears to carry unanimously. All right, further discussion or amendments?
My, my last one would be, I am comfortable with keeping the number at 62, but I'm open to some other discussion about that. I understand the applicant is not comfortable with the 62. So I'm, I'm going to defer that to other people's suggestions.
Mr. Kuchin?
I, I'm, I'm going to suggest wording change to M and it, and go with an average. I, I just think averages are the simplest calculation for people to understand and the simplest calculation for Dogtopia in this case to maintain if need be. So my suggestion would be that the second sentence, read, and this is just taking on, on Zach's suggestion, the maximum number of animals to be boarded overnight shall be an average of 62 over any third, ever a monthly period. To pick a period that were, is well understood and well defined.
Or any, how about over any calendar month?
That's, you, you almost, I was going to make that amendment before it ever got out of my mouth. I like it, Dennis.
Mr. Kuchin, please restate your proposed amendment.
Yeah, what Dennis is, what Dennis said. Maximum number of animals shall be board, to be boarded overnight shall be an average of 62 over any calendar month.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Bolazina. Mr. Weichel, does that work for you?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. White.
So that means 365 days a year, we can have 62 overnight kennels.
Yes.
Correct.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yep.
And is that what we want?
I'm, I'm proposing it, so.
Yes.
That was originally designed, worded anyway, so 62 would be.
Right. Because if it's 63, it's not daycare anymore.
Um, you know, the only recommendation I would make to that is you could add another sentence that would say, uh, calendar month reporting is, uh, to be provided on demand from city staff or something like that. I'm just trying to figure out how to make it so that there's, it's not a dance to try and get these reportings.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner McKnight. What I'd say is the, the conditional use permit as adopted is enforceable by law and I, I have the ability at any time to ask.
Okay, then that's good. I'm good with that then.
Do you have to have a badge?
What? A badge?
I need one of those.
Further questions or discussion?
What, uh, what, what is the issue with, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bolazina.
What is the issue with, or do you have an issue with H about the fence material? We didn't see any, I know this is not the appropriate.
We have a, a motion, a amended condition on the floor. Do we want to?
Yes.
I'm.
All right, any discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. White.
Yes, yes. I'm still uncomfortable with the 62. If we could, if we're talking about an average over a period of a month, it seems to me we can have a number much lower than that. And still, that would still give the ability to have 125 animals on, on Thanksgiving weekend. But there are only two there this, today. So I understand in St. Peters. So two, and if it's two over 20 days, that's 40 plus, plus 125, say, on three or four nights, then we're getting an average much lower than 62. And, 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 and the applicant is still happy. I'm very worried about this turning into effectively a kennel, overnight kennel.
We're effectively defining a kennel as anything that's less than 62. So we'd be proposing to have some lower number to be definition.
Well, what does anybody else think?
I like 62. And I like monthly.
Why?
I, well, I said it, 62, if you get more than 62, it's not daycare anymore. And we have to understand that there are seasonal and cyclical swings in the number that, uh, you know, that, that make them take in more to satisfy the customer, so.
And I hear what you say. If it's cyclical, you can have a much lower number than 62. But if you have 62, 365 days a year, it's something more than daycare.
Okay, we've, uh, we've been discussing this and we've got a motion on the floor for 62. I would propose that we go ahead and vote on the motion. And if you, uh, if you don't like it, then, um, vote against it in that case. All in favor, actually, let's do it, let's do a roll call vote, just in case. Uh, Ms. Lowell.
Alderman Frauci.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. O'Mel.
Aye.
Ms. Munzel.
Aye.
Chairman Seema.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Bolazina.
Yes.
Doc, or Mr. White.
No.
Mr. Kuchin.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
And Mr. McKnight.
Yes.
The motion carries eight to one.
Okay, we have a, uh, item number four. It's been amended three times now, I believe. Any further discussion or amendments?
Is it ready for a motion to approve?
I think it's, it's already been motioned.
It is.
See the vote. Uh, Alderman Frauci.
Aye.
Chairman Seema.
Aye.
Ms. Miller.
Aye.
Dr. O'Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Kuchin.
Yes.
Mr. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Bolazina.
Yes.
And Ms. Munzel.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
How late are we going to stay tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. O'Mel.
Request a five-minute recess.
I approve.
Any objection to a five-minute recess? Not here.
Not at all.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Zach. That's like a good deal, good project.
It's 10, 10, we will adjourn to 10:15.
If I'm not back, you can start without me. I'm not back, you can start without me.
All these other lights, um, like coach lights, path lights. Those, those lights should be under three hundred lumens. That was the general intent of why that was set up that way. That makes any sense.
So what you're saying then is if it, it's, it's defined as security lighting, if it's a floodlight over or something similar, over seven hundred lumens or any other luminaire or any other light over three hundred lumens, it's automatically a security light.
Right. And then it has to be an emotion detector.
Well, so that, that point too, then we need to change that light sources of any luminaire not inclusive of number one in excess of three hundred lumens, something like that. So they're not.
They're not, they're not on top of each other.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make that, I'll make that as we get through. I just want, that was one of the questions I had and I think that.
Uh, yeah, I apologize. I'm not.
No, no, that's fine. I, I, there's a lot of stuff going on here, a lot of moving parts. And then the second one I had was, Part D, number one, A. Um, the addition of and emit light that exceeds the intensity limitations. I don't.
That's a Dennis.
I'm struggling with the idea of somebody taking a spotlight because I actually went out, I actually went out and bought a light meter to go test these things. And it's like, as I walked up to my neighbor's property, I could get like within ten feet of their front, front door with their lights, you know, big lights on before I got to point five, um, candle, uh, foot candles. So i- it, if I get a floodlight or a spotlight and I shine it in my neighbor's property from far enough away, it's not going to hit the point five, um, foot candles, but it is going to be really annoying to me having to look at a spotlight shining at me. So that's where I'm kind of like, I don't like adding the, I, I say you just make it so you can't shine a light on your neighbor's house or property. You can shine it on your property. So that's another one I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a recommendation to make a change on that. Um, but everything, I mean, the other things are all looking, things look really good in here. I like the way things are looking and I like the way they are. But one other question I had for staff as well is we have security lightings listed as, um, security lights, operations, security light should be on a motion detector and have a maximum duration of no longer than five minutes. What happens if somebody, so, so are we saying that somebody can't have um, two floodlights outside their garage and have it be on a switch?
That's correct.
And be able to just turn the switch on or turn it off when they're done?
It has to be.
If they have a party in their backyard, they can't have floodlights that light up their backyard to have a party.
A hundred percent. Yes, correct. It has to be on a motion sensor. Yep. This is what we're trying to, this is the whole reason honestly why we're having these amendments. Um, is for what you're describing, people illuminating their yards. For extended periods of time that impacts neighboring properties.
I mean, extended period of time, more than five minutes, you're saying. So that's where it's, it's not really an extended period of time. So I, I guess I'm struggling with the idea of there are people who want to have, you know, a party in their backyard at seven o'clock at night on, and they want to have the lights on when they're out there and they want to have it for an hour and a half and are we saying, I guess we're saying this, that you can't do that. Which is kind of a strange thing. I want to go out and work on my car in the driveway. I can't have a light that's not on a motion sensor.
You just gotta keep moving.
Very good.
Mr. Bolzina.
Yeah, I, I'm, I've been struggling with this since the beginning and I understand, uh, what Ryan's trying to do here and, and the phone calls he has to take at certain times, but it's still, it's still a struggle to define a security light. And I've said this before, I'll say it again, you know, one man's security light might be another man's decorative. And, uh, I mean, there are just so many lights uh, that people have, a little pole light, uh, you know, at your uh, entrance walkway, you know, it's, it's, it could be an open lantern with a bulb that you see. And yeah, you're going to be looking at that bulb, uh, and I don't know if that's so offensive that we have to legislate it somehow. That's what I'm struggling with. Uh, I can understand, and I've been in situations and I explained this before. And that's why we put this limitation of people putting pole, pole lights, you know, a light up on a pole that would really be offensive. But when we're talking about lights that are on your house or lighting your porch or lighting your doors, and I know you've added some, some, uh, other exclusions in here, which I think are very good. Uh, you added the exclusion for spotlights that light up the front of your house, which seems to get more and more popular lately. That's not a security light and that's not something that has to be on a timer. So I think there's an effort there to recognize that. But this whole thing is just very difficult to legislate, I think. And it may cause our, uh, our departments even more grief than not having it with people complaining or walking around. People purchasing light meters.
Walking around the neighborhood.
And walking around your house. Uh, might be a new activity. So, uh, but if this goes forward, I do have a couple of comments that the, uh, the spotlight of, uh, seven hundred lumens is only like a sixty watt light bulb by my research.
Forty-five, isn't it? Yeah, it's small.
And kind of on what sources you looked at. And, uh, but certainly it's a pretty low. I mean, in the old days before LEDs, I, I would have a hundred watt spotlights, right? So, uh, so I think it's a pretty low standard. Uh, and, and as has been brought up already, you know, you're having a barbecue, you gotta put your spotlights on. I mean, are we gonna make people buy a different kind of light, you know, to light up their deck so they can have people over and not fall off the deck? I, I don't know. It's very hard. I, I, I understand your pain, but I, I don't know if we're there yet. I hate to keep beating us up and sending it back, but I just, I think we're all struggling with the basic philosophy of how much we want to regulate somebody's porch light.
Alderman Fratton.
So I think that, um, I think a couple of things. Number one, I certainly understand the challenge of having um, residents who feel like their neighbors are literally flooding them in light. And I don't mean that the, the property where the light source is emanating from, but their own property. Um, and I think that, that it is challenging to try to figure out how to regulate, you know, please keep your light to yourself. And by that, I don't mean the beacon effect. I mean, the actual, um, you know, spotlights that actually go on to other people's properties. Or in, in one case where I had a resident ask me to come over at night and the entire front of their own house was lit up by the house across the street. Um, and that's, that's very difficult for, for you then to figure out how to, to deal with that if there's no code. Um, you know, we, we don't have active enforcement. We have passive enforcement. So the reality is, unless your light is a nuisance, it's unlikely that the city is going to be getting a phone call to come out and take a look at it. Um, I think, you know, certainly I'm happy to, to look at all kinds of changes, but I do think that at the heart of it, it still comes down to the issue that, that when the city gets a phone call and there's clearly a light source that we would not allow a commercial facility next to a resident, you know, residential neighborhood to do. I think it's really hard to figure out how to, for Ryan to figure out how to fix that if there's no code that says you can't light up your neighbor's house with your floodlights. And I think most, you know, neighbors are pretty reasonable about if you have a party and what have you. But I think if you're having a party every single day where you're lighting up your yard like a football field, you know, a neighbor might actually become, you know, a little tired of that. So, you know, I, I, I don't disagree that it's a challenging thing to look at, but I still think that, that, um, having some regulations is, is a positive.
Mr. Kujin.
Let me, um, so agree with everything everybody said. Um, let, let me ask a question on M. So D one M, I'm sorry, D one D, geez. Um, if I'm reading, this is mounting height. If I'm reading that correctly, and so I'm looking for somebody to acknowledge or disagree with me, I cannot put a spotlight, even if it's on a five minute timer, on the corner of my house directed down, let's say on my, on my driveway. Is that, is that correct? I have to, I have to put that spotlight at fifteen foot or lower.
Correct. You can't put it at the second floor. You gotta put it at the first floor.
Which to me visually, let's say in the middle of, to me, under the Eves makes most sense to make it innocuous personally.
Well, and the challenge there too is I'm, I don't mean to butt in, but it's like, do I have to rewire my house to do that? Because I'm gonna have to.
Put it on a battery probably. Okay.
How can you put a, a light at the first floor level and not the second floor level?
No, Dennis, I think the, the point I was trying to make, the point I make there is, is I have a, I have a one-story house that drops off in the back. So the basement, you know, is a walkout. It's on the first floor, but on the back of the house, it's the second, second floor. So it's twenty feet up. Um, to change that, I'd have to go and rewire my house at this point. I'd have to pull new wire down to the first floor from the second floor. And otherwise I'm, I'm not, I'm in non-compliance automatically. And you've got probably thousands, hundreds of houses in town or country that are going to be in non-compliance based upon that.
Alderman Fratton.
I think those would be legal non-conforming uses though. They wouldn't be, so if you look at, uh, D one C, compliance required, it says, um, all luminaires legally existing prior to the adoption date of this section shall be considered a legal non-conforming use. So you would not have to rewire your house, but if you were building a new house, you would might take that into consideration with the wiring that you install in your brand new home. Or in addition.
So, so, so we're, we're picking fifteen feet. Make sure I understand fifteen feet is, is an attempt, if you will. It's our best attempt to make sure that that light doesn't spill over to, to adjoining, um, properties. That's, that's the higher you go, the more likely in somebody's face or the light is spilling over, um, to that adjoining property.
Yes.
I understand the intent.
The higher the light, the higher the nuisance value, which is why we don't like football fields to have really high lights next to a residential district.
Believe me, I get it. My, my daughter has had a spotlight in her bedroom window from our adjoining property for the last five years.
All right.
Thankfully she doesn't look anymore.
So yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's, like you said, it's very difficult. And, and really, although the specular beacon or whatever you want to call it is a nuisance, uh, I think the focus on what is the light level at your property line may be the more prudent approach. Cause obviously, uh, it's what spills out uh, past your property line is what should be the concern. And it's hard, it's hard to get more than half a foot candle at the property line from a light, you know, on your front porch, you know?
It's pretty bright. I mean, you have to be pretty bright to get to a half foot candle, but, uh, uh, the other question I have for you guys is I guess I'm looking at this and saying the security lighting, I, I, I could see making a, a an argument that the security lighting, the timer part of it, or the, 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 uh, uh, motion detector really has to do with dawn to dusk lights. I mean, those are the ones that I don't like. Um, so if you have security lighting, it seems like we could have some kind of wording in here around dawn to dusk, you know, you can't have dawn to dusk lighting unless it's on a motion sensor or something like that. Um, as opposed to trying to say you can't, you, you know, any light that you turn on has to be on a timer. If it's a floodlight.
Well, I'm still struggling with the definition of security light, but.
I'm still dead, yeah.
Well, let me ask the group. It's ten thirty-six. I'm sensing a, a, a very distinct lack of energy, uh, in the Zoom room.
Meltdown.
Like we're not where, where, this is not a matter of, we're just need to amend this thing a couple of times and bring it home. So given that, do we want to, uh, continue this item? And then if we're going to continue this item, do we want to continue item number two? Which has been with us for six years and another month probably won't kill us to, uh, to the next meeting. Now, I say that, Ryan, I don't know what we have on the agenda. I don't know what we have in the agenda for next time already, so.
There, there's nothing else on the, there's nothing forthcoming on the agenda for next month, so fingers crossed, um, we'll have more time to focus on these two items. I, I'll, I'll use my time right now just to implore everyone to send me comments. Um, if they have thoughts on these ordinances, um, please, um, I'm in my office every day. You know, during business hours, so, um, send an email call. The more feedback I get, the, the better I think the result is. Um, so I, I really ask you guys to reach out and let me know your thoughts. Especially on lighting.
Yeah.
Fair enough. All right. Well, in that case, can I have a motion on agenda item number one?
Uh, a motion to suspend until the next meeting or whatever the proper.
A motion to continue and to continue to November eighteenth.
There you go. I know you would have it.
All right. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Fratton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on agenda item number two?
A motion to suspend whatever we said.
Continue.
To continue.
Continue, continue.
To November eighteenth.
You may really want to suspend it though.
I, well, yeah, I mean, we could, well, the first one I'd like to suspend. The second one I need to get passed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McKnight. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion appears to carry unanimously. Okay, uh, let's see. We did have some other business tonight, the city engineer discussion.
You should have all received the memo from city administrator Bob Shelton, um, you know, it's, it's staff's belief that, you know, we, we did the research, no other pure city requires a registered professional engineer be seated on a, on a planning and zoning commission. Staff believes that having a broad range of experience and, and citizens that are interested in the future development of their community is, is really what's important, um, and gives us that flexibility. Um, you all represent the city very extremely well and we have engineers on, on the board right now as, as I'm speaking. Uh, but that's, that's, uh, what's contained in the memo. Um, like I, um, said at the last, um, meeting, the public works commission did vote, um, in, uh, to recommend, uh, removal of that designation of the city engineer from the, uh, playing his own commission position that's been unfilled for many, many years. Um, and that's what city administrator is looking to, uh, receive feedback on from, from this commission. Since that is a, a position on this, on commission.
So the question you're asking is, do we think that, are we in favor of recommending to the board that a member be an engineer? Must be, at least one member must be an engineer?
One, one member must be an engineer. That's what's in the.
Drop that requirement.
The code, the, the request is to drop that requirement.
Got it.
So.
Alderman Fratton.
So just as a reminder, the, the request that will come before the board is not just to take it as the city engineer out of the planning and zoning commission. It is to remove the city engineer as a position in the city. Um, those are two different things. So, um, it, it saying we don't need to have a city engineer sitting on the planning and zoning commission will also mean you're saying that we don't need to have a city engineer sitting in the city. Um, that position has remained unfilled for quite a while. However, I'd like to point out that for nine months, uh, we had no public works director. Um, and even prior to that, when we did have a public works director, um, we had one without a, a, a professional engineering license. Um, we hired a new public works, uh, director who was a PE, but he has since, um, left the city and that position is going to remain unfilled for quite some time. So we have no, um, engineer on staff with a PE, um, at all. And so, um, if we wanted to have somebody do that, we would have to hire in a consultant. So if you look at the code under city engineer, that isn't just a position. In fact, the city engineer code doesn't even talk about planning and zoning. The only part in the, the code that mentions city engineer on the commission is in the planning and zoning commission portion of our code. The city engineer actually comes under a different section of the code and is a separate position. So I just want to remind you that when you're looking at it, it's not just from, from the position of, of, uh, planning and zoning, it's also removing that position of an inhabitant of the city being a member of this board, but also, um, an advocate for our city as a PE. So just, just to keep in mind that those aren't, it's, they're not mutually exclusive. That position would go away from the code. Completely.
Mr. McKnight.
I, I guess I'm, I'm reading this differently and I, I need a little clarification on that because I think what, what I'm reading here is not that we're making a recommendation to the board of Alderman to remove the city engineer position. Or re, remove the requirement that that city engineer be a permanent member of the planning and zoning commission. And I guess I, I don't know that, that we're the ones to define whether a city engineer position needs to be in the city. I think the, the, it seems like the issue before us is, is should it be a permanent position on the board, on the, on the planning commission? Um, and I guess I'm, I'm confused that we're conflating those two. Are we conflating those two or are those the same question? Cause it,
They are.
I'm not reading it that way.
So the, the draft language that was sent to, um, the board of Alderman is to remove the city engineer and the city treasurer positions from our code. So as a result, they are going out to the commissions who would have dealt with those folks. Um, because, because those commissions would have one. Now, this commission has not had the city engineer sitting on it for, I mean, Dave Huff was the city, was the first city engineer. I think Skip Manj was probably the last city engineer. And don't quote me on that though, because there could have been somebody after him. I just know that he's the last one that I'm aware of. Um, but it's, the, the, the move towards the board of Alderman is, um, the, the bill before us will be to remove both of those positions. Both of which required someone who is an inhabitant of the city to look at those, to look at those items.
Mr. Kujin.
So I read, I read the letter from staff for Mr. Shelton, same way as McKnight does. I, I wonder, um, Alderman Fratton, if, if we, if staff hasn't us, hasn't asked us as a planning and zoning to consider a narrow, narrower issue than perhaps the board is considering.
And they have. And that's the same thing for public works. They're asking the commissions to consider the narrower issue instead of looking at as a whole.
So, so my, my, my suggestion to the commission would be to discuss Mr. Shelton's question of us, not the broader question. I, you know, I, like, like Mr. McKnight, I'm not qualified to, and I don't think we should opine on whether the city as a whole should have a, a, a city engineer or not. I don't feel qualified to discuss that.
Mr. Spiller.
You just called me, Mr. Seema?
I did.
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell. No, I just was gonna say, I don't, I'm uncomfortable opining on something that isn't presented to us. I, I, I don't think that we should, oh, I mean, I, I don't want us to make some sort of pronouncement on something that we don't have everything in front of us that we need to see or have. Does that make sense? I, I, um, I don't want my answer to a totally different question be applied to a totally different question. Sense?
So I think what's before us here, uh, which will inform the alderman's, uh, discussion on whether we need a city engineer at all is do we need a city engineer here on this, uh, body? And if I'm reading this right, also do we, do we want to require that a member of P and Z be required to be an engineer?
I just think that those are two very different questions. I mean, I, I, you could say we don't feel that we have to have that person be a member of our commission. That doesn't necessarily mean that we don't think it's a valuable resource to have in the city. I, those, they're just two very, very different questions to be presented with. And so I think it's very important that we're very clear that we are only answering something very narrow. And if necessary, say that we weren't asked to make a commentary on that bigger question. And our pronouncement on the narrow question should not be implied or imputed to be a commentary or answer to the bigger question that's apparently being posed to the board of Alderman. Because I, I don't, I, I want, I don't want my words to be misconstrued, if that makes sense. I've said that three times now, making sense, but that's my concern.
Mr. Bolzina.
Yeah, I totally agree with that sentiment and I, I think we should definitely, you know, just keep between our rails and say what we, whether we want a city engineer on the commission to serve or not, whether we have one or not is a city's decision, but we don't need one on our commission.
Mr. McKnight.
And, and I guess, and I, I think I've, I've said this before, I like the idea of having a city engineer on this commission. If we had a city engineer, we haven't had a city engineer in a very long time. And this commission has done, I think, excellent work without that resource. Not saying we would have done better work with that resource, but I guess my feedback here is, you know, and, and I, I, I think the question, the challenge I have here is I'm not sure if it's just asking our opinion or are we asking to, to pass a resolution? Or what are we asking?
That is a feedback here.
It's just feedback.
Just feedback. All right.
So, so I for one commissioner say, I, I like the concept of having a city engineer. If we had a city engineer on this commission, it may make better, it may make us get to answers quick, more quickly. But we have not had a city engineer on this commission since I've served here and I think we've done pretty well without one. So I don't know that, I, I don't know that it's required. I, I, I don't think that it's required. Let me put it that way.
Yeah, why don't we just go around? I, uh, and then, so I, I would say for me, I don't think we need a city engineer. And I don't think we need to be required that a plan, that we have at least one P and Z member who is a PE. Although if we could find one, I think that would be a good thing. Ms. Mansell, would you like to go next?
Um, yeah, I, I guess I, I, if I'm following correctly, I agree that if we had one, it would be nice to have them sit on the planning and zoning. But is it, I'm, I guess I'm confused. Is it, is it an open position that's being, being advertised and it's just not being?
The city for many, many, many decades has had a position of city engineer in the code and it's reserved a position on the P and Z commission and that position has not been filled for many, many, many years. Um, because we've moved beyond that form of government. We have professional staff, um, i- in place and can hire consultants, but.
So it's not even possible to, we're not gonna ever hire city engineer anymore.
We, we, we very, we very much, that's a board decision whether or not we're going to hire a, a public works director who's a, a professional engineer, um, civil engineer, uh, but as a, as a stat, uh, statistically, if you will, create a position like city treasurer, city clerk, um, city engineer, that's what they're talking about removing is that position, city engineer, city treasurer.
So you'd like the public works director to be an engineer and kind of do a dual position kind of thing?
That, that's, that'll be a decision of the board and.
Okay, I gotcha.
In our municipal code, our public works director must be an engineer with a PE.
Right.
Okay.
The, the city engineer position, which is also in our code, is a separate position, has a stipend. It's not a full-time employee. It's a person who is an inhabitant of the city who comes in and assists, um, on, on certain things and also serves on planning and zoning, much like, so if you looked at our ways and means commission and you look. Much like, so if you looked at our ways and means commission and you looked at the municipal code for that, a preference is given to residents to serve on that commission who have certain types of experience. Same thing for public works commission. Our other commissions have, um, preferences in terms, in terms of the type of experience that they're looking for in, in the, um, the makeup of that, that body.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, um, the city engineer was that person by code, planning and zoning commission.
I understand. Okay.
Staff's opinion, staff's opinion is that we need a broad range of experience. Um, and that it maybe would be smart in the future to specify, it would be great to have someone with real estate, civil engineering, architecture, that, those kind of backgrounds that obviously help inform decisions that this body makes. Um, but as a specific mandated position where you shall have this accreditation, that's, that's where staff believes we don't need that position on, on this commission.
Yeah, so I would agree with staff, uh, the staff position on, on this, I, I guess. Especially since it's obviously a hard, um, specific thing to be filling, so. And we already have two already, right? We're, we're doing good.
Yeah, Ms. Miller?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, you know, to be totally candid, um, when we discussed this before, I, I felt that the, the conversation had distinctly different to it. At the time, I felt it was more sort of a conversation of whether or not the, the commission was capable of adequately, properly, uh, doing its job if we didn't have a city engineer on the commission? Or could we do our job well and to the best of our ability? And at that time, I, I felt the conversation was, my recollection of it is that that was very positive, that we were absolutely capable of doing the job with the collective knowledge of the membership that we have now, the depth of experience in all different areas of personal and professional practice. We've got an engineer, you know, we've got an architect, we've got lawyers, we've got, we've got all the different kind of walks of life, um, that doctors, that, that, uh, people do. And that that was, um, a healthy makeup, a healthy population of the commission and that we were chugging along just fine. It would be great to have an engineer as an advisory capacity, but in no way was it hampering our ability to do a banging up job for the city. So I, I, that was my recollection of the conversation. That would be what I still believe now. Um, and I agree with the other assessments. It'd be nice to have one on here, but certainly I don't think in any way it's hampering our ability to get the job done. However, I think it's important to make it clear that that's not meant to be a statement or opinion on my part as to whether or not the city should retain that as a position. Um, that's, that's my two cents on it.
Great. Mr. Bolizina?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I've said it once, but I agree totally with what Justin said. So, uh, the only other thing that not everyone is discussing is whether there should be any minimum preferential requirements for membership, which I do have some, uh, I guess affection for that concept, uh, be it, uh, you know, people that have to look at plans. It might be helpful to have a, one or two people on the commission that is familiar with reading plans, like a civil engineer or that kind of thing. But, uh, so I'm still open to the question of having a certain number of minimum members have some expertise in the things that we have to deal with. Not two-story playhouses in a backyard, but, you know, things that are a little bit more meaty when, when we have to look at them.
Anybody that has not spoken have anything new to add to the feedback? Okay, Ryan, do you have what you need?
Think so.
Okay. Uh, next item was our 2021 schedule?
That's just for your information. I know Amanda likes to get those plugged into her, her phone, so, um, want to get that out sooner rather than later.
Roll to approve.
What can I say? I'm a creature of habit.
Ben, who isn't looking forward to 2021 at this point, so?
Gotta be in the phone. I agree. Alderman Fratton, do you have a report from the Board of Aldermen?
I do. So the conditional use permit from fourteen country air passed the board, um, as did two sign code variances, the US Cloud and Accenture. Um, and we had the, uh, public hearings for the fence code and the PDDs. And, uh, those will be voted on at the next meeting, which is Monday. And on Monday, the backyard chicken bill comes for its public hearing. Um, and so then the vote will be a couple of weeks after that.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Yeah.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Bolizina. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion.